Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 13th, 2023 Board of Education meeting. Call to order of the regular meeting of the Board of Education. With us this evening is Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Guernsey, myself, Mrs. J. Gibson, our superintendent, Mr. Testane, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Maxine Canelli, Mr. Peterson, and Mrs. Kelly. If everyone can please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mrs. Kelly, would you start us off? Okay, with the board's consent, we have some very special guests with us this evening, and I'm going to ask the board if it's okay for everyone if we move our special recognitions up this evening ahead of public comment. Anything, any objections? No? Thank you. All right, so I'm going to hand this off to Mr. Testane, and I presume our A.D.s to lead us in our celebration.
Before we get started, I just want to acknowledge both of our athletic directors for the amount of work they do tirelessly to make sure that all our student athletes have a top-notch experience. To Gina and Todd, thank you so much for the year that you committed to our student athletes. I also want to recognize our coaches because they are the unsung heroes. They put in a lot of time and effort. I know those big contracts that they receive. But as a former coach, I can tell you the amount of time and commitment that they put to the student athletes and their teams is outstanding. I can't speak to the other sports right now, but I will speak to the baseball and softball teams. I've never witnessed two more fundamentally sound teams play this year, and that's a tribute to the preparation by their coaches, so congratulations.
All right, thank you. Thank you for having us. My name is Todd Parnas. I'm the Athletic Director at Fairfield-Ludlow. There are a few teams we want to recognize. Not everybody was able to be here tonight for various reasons. But first, I just want a couple of shout-outs before we introduce the kids that are here. The girls' lacrosse team, head coach Sarah Salsey, was the FCAC East Division Regular Season Champions this year. And the boys' outdoor track and field, coached by Dave Knolf, were also regular season Division Champions in the FCAC. And Tyler Bartlett, who I don't think is here. Tyler, no, he couldn't make it tonight. He was the CIC Class L State Champion in the 800-meter run. So congratulations to him. Also like to recognize the girls' outdoor track and field team, head coach Justin Tomczyk. He was the FCAC Coach of the Year this year, and they won the regular season divisional championship as well as the FCAC Team Championship. And is there anybody here from the track team? No, unfortunately, it's a tough time for everybody to get out here, but we do have -- I do want to mention some of the individual track champions as well. Colleen Halliday won the FCAC Championship in the pole vault. Caroline Spangler won the FCAC Championship in the 200-meter. And Tia Stapleton won the FCAC Championship in the long jump, triple jump, and high jump. That's quite an amazing accomplishment. And then Caroline Spangler also went on to win the Class Double L State Championship in the 200-meter. And Tia Stapleton went on to win the Class Double L State Championship in the triple jump. So congratulations to them. We do have representation from the softball team here. Ladies, why don't you come on up? Few of the players could not make it tonight because they're actually back at UConn, playing in an All-Star game tonight. And head coach Lou Binoso is also at that game, but I do want to mention that he did receive the FCAC Coach of the Year this year. Anna Newberg, our assistant coach, is here to represent the coaching staff. And before I have her introduce the team, I just want to mention the softball team was the regular season champions for the FCAC. They also won the FCAC Championship postseason for the third year in a row and won the Class Double L State Championship. So congratulations, ladies.
These are the names of the players who are on our postseason tournament roster. So their names are Gina Solo, Della Jackson, Angie Tavella, Lea Incarnacion, Lauren Foley, Caroline Branscombe, Izzy Mulhall, Ellie Galagi, Elena Oe, Ally Tornus, Alex Louis, Katie Tornus, Delaney Sullivan, Rosanna Maturi, Anna Gedact, Chelsea Villar, who was named MVP at our game on Saturday, Kiera Fazio, and Caitlin Yeh.
And I also want to mention that Chelsea Villar was named the Connecticut High School Coaches Association Connecticut Player of the Year. An amazing accomplishment, Chelsea. Congratulations.
Okay, my name is Gina Di Giacomo, and I am the Athletic Director at Fairfield-Ward High School. I have representation from three of our teams as well. I do just want to also echo what Todd said, and thank you for giving us this forum to highlight the success that the spring student athletes have had this season. We tonight are -- we brought to you some of our state champions, which I know in the winter meeting, we kind of went through to just highlight the level of success it takes to win a state championship. And congratulations to Ludlow Softball. You guys were awesome to watch. So tonight, we're going to start with Meg Barnau. She's on our track and field team, and Meg won the Class Double L High Jump State Championship. Meg actually competed today as well. You saw Meg in the winter as well for her success in indoor track. Next up, I actually have two of my coaches here, and I'm going to let them talk about their student athletes because, like Mr. Testane spoke about, it's really these guys that are doing the work. And what they've done with their teams and their student athletes has been amazing. So first up is John Harvey to talk about his student athlete, Petro.
So Petro Kuzmanak is graduating senior this year. He is a three-time state championship for the boys' individual tennis tournament. His sophomore year, he missed his freshman year because of COVID, came in his sophomore year where he went 19-2. He won the tournament that year defeating both players in the semis and finals he lost in the regular season. His junior year, he went 16-1. And then the boy he lost to from Staples, he defeated in the final of the tournament. And then this year, he was undefeated at 20-0. And I think noting that he's only lost to two players, he got his little bit of revenge back in the tournament. But having a record of 55-3 for three years of -- for boys tennis, that's something where I had to go back and look through the record books to see. And Petro's coach, Brian Barker, James Blake's old coach, and that's where we play the James Blake Courts. And I think that would be a conversation to have, who's got more tallies in high school? So Petro will be attending Rice University in Houston in the fall. I know the coach there and the program's very excited to have him, and I'm extremely excited to see how he's going to grow and mature as a tennis player.
Petro also got FCAC Player of the Year this year. To piggyback on John and to tee it up for Brett, I think the records that John spoke about, 55-3, and the records that Brett is going to speak about really highlight the dominance of these two programs. So I just want to point that out because to go 55-3, the consistency and just the utter dominance is commendable.
All right, thank you. Before I start, I just wanted to thank Gina Di Giacomo, our Athletic Director. She has been beyond selfless for our program, making sure that we have everything we need in order to succeed at the highest level that we play at. And thank all of you for having us and just the love and support throughout the season. We appreciate it. This ball club is really, really special to me. We go back many, many years ago in their little leaguers, and to see their growth and to see them succeed at the highest level in high school baseball is something that's really special. A lot of these guys are going on to play college baseball, but they're also going on to do a lot more special things. They have a lot of talents, a lot of passions that they bring out within our program, and the trust and commitment they have to one another and the friendships and the bonds is something that makes this program, you know, the high-level, top-notch program that it is. And I just want to say thank you to the guys for buying into the culture of our program and making it something that everybody appreciates and is extremely proud of. So thank you. I also can't forget Paul. Paul Cavanna, great guy, awesome personality, love having him around the ball club, too. So thank you, Paul. I'm going to read the names of the players on our team. Garrett Larson, Tyler Harmony, Hayden Lee, Kyle Justo, Grady Shops, Kieran Shea, Patty Galvin, Drew Balog, Peter Crosley, Derek Davis, Jake Harmony, Charlie Swanson, Griffin Dodder, Tyler Humphrey, M.J. Pasery, Griffin Polly, Carson Swaim, Jimmy Dobbs, Austin Howard, Will Stellato, Will Eustace, Aiden Dowd, Jack Passick, Colin Farley, and A.J. Fermato. All these guys make this district really special. So, oh, yeah, our managers, too. Alex Capuano, there's a lot of people. Alex Capuano, Johnny Benzie, Riley Shea, Robbie Mills, my coaching staff, Jimmy Pajura, Danny Cohen, and Dante Galucci. Thank you for everything. You guys are phenomenal. Come on up. Griffin Polly was named the FCAC MVP in the championship game. They're also three -- we did the three-peat for the FCAC Championship and back-to-back state champions. We also set a program -- we also set a program record for stolen bases this year. I think the number's like 135 stolen bases, so that's pretty incredible. Thank you.
The baseball team was also voted number one in the state by the Connecticut Coaches Poll, and Brett mentioned this is -- they're also Team of the Year. But as Brett mentioned, this is their third straight FCAC title and second straight state title, which is incredible.
Thank you, everyone, for coming and to all the coaches as well. And I know how much work it goes into creating such a great, awesome team, and, you know, I'm sure your parents have something to do with taking you along on the road, all those ways. So thanks to your parents and those who supported you along the way. So congrats, everybody. Have a great night. Thank you so much for being here. Backing up, we will now take public comment. So if anybody has any interest in providing public comment at this time, you may feel free to come on forward and provide public comment. Moving on, our next item is the Slam Collaborative -- oops, sorry. Slam Collaborative Enrollment Projections and Facility Utilization/Racial Balance Scenarios. Mr. Zupa and Mr. Gallagher, welcome.
Yeah, I see that now. Good evening, everybody. So tonight, Pat and I are here to give an update on where we're at. We've been to work for, God, the last, what, four months or so on this process? And tonight, we have a couple of different options to be able to share with the board and the community. We do have a pretty lengthy slide deck. I think if there's anything that we're stuck on as a board as I'm working through it because it'll kind of build upon the next, I'm glad to pause to entertain any questions so that if there's any confusion, you understand the slides that follow. I believe we have about 50 slides or so, Pat, so I don't want to -- I don't want to get anybody hung up on anything. So we'll start with the main part of really the guidance that we were provided by the Board of Ed, and that's really the charge, the consultant, to look at this redistricting plan. The three key elements of that are to target an overall utilization, operational utilization between 85% and 90% for all the schools subtracting for the unique programming, which we'll talk about in a couple of slides from now. Also, to bring into consideration the feeder patterns for both middle school as well as into high school, and then bring the disparity in racial balance between any one of the elementary schools within the limits that are required by law. And I'll talk a little bit more about what that exactly means on the following slide. And then linked as part of this is really the full charge from the board. Within that contains a lot of parameters and a lot of detailed information about what they desired us to look at from an option planning standpoint, as well as some additional criteria and objectives which we built into our presentation for tonight. Just to recap the overall process, back in January and February, the board was working through the development of this charge that I previously mentioned. And really, the end of February, leading up until now, sort of the midpoint in June, we've been working on the scenario development. We've been working with the administrative cabinet. They've established a working group there of professionals with various expertise for us to be able to go back and forth on not only data, but really vetting the options with them, making revisions to those options, discussing the pros and cons in order to get where we're at tonight, to be able to present the three most viable options to the board over the coming months, really the bulk of the summer.
Not to interrupt you really quickly, but just for anyone watching from home, the presentation and for anyone in the audience is live and up and on our website now on the meetings page of our website, in case you didn't get that. So it is up and available for you all to follow along either here home. And I'm so sorry to interrupt you. You should have said that beforehand. Thank you.
No problem. Sorry about that. So looking ahead in July and August, there'll be some additional scenario refinement. So as we're showing options with numbers and maps, those are all going to be subject to change as we continue to work with the administrative team here, looking at a finer grain level of detail in transportation, all the little nuances that go into a reconfiguration or redistricting plan. We'll be making some changes there. And then ultimately, they'll be running some analysis internally to get an understanding of what the operational cost implications are for the three scenarios we're discussing. Later in the beginning of the start of school year into the early fall, we will update the options using the 23-24 enrollment. We're going to launch an online interactive map viewer, which will have both locational services as well as address search, so you could be able to log on, see what each individual option means for you as a family or student, to see what the implications are there. There'll be several presentations to the public, to the board, as well as the Board of Ed looking to be able to adopt a preferred plan within that window of time. And then really from November through the summer is really when it gets into the implementation planning. That's where you have to take into consideration changes in staffing across the buildings as well as transportation routing and any mobilization that needs to take place to put the plan into action for the 24-25 school year. So starting with one of the key pieces, which is the capacity and utilization, back in the fall, we updated a capacity study for the elementary schools. In our experience, when we speak to the words utilization, especially in elementary schools and those that group by address or neighborhood, we've seen throughout our careers that typically the effective utilization is anywhere between 85% to 90% for well-utilized districts. Really, when you group based on geography, you always have where the kids don't come all neatly packaged at your ideal class sizes, so you have that inherent target kind of built in naturally there. Typically, we look at calculating utilization as a percentage of the overall maximum capacity. In Fairfield, maximum capacity can be described as the class sizes for the lower elementary grades, K through 2, no larger than 23, and then grades 3 through 5 not exceeding 25 as those class size maximums. However, historically, Fairfield has used 21 students per classroom, especially when we speak to the words operational capacity. That's really kind of the number that permeates across all the different grades. So when we begin really looking at it, and I think the next slide does a great job of explaining -- my thumb's going to get -- having to hold this thing down the whole time, I got to stretch out a little bit. Sorry about that. So when we talk about our operational capacity and looking at the consultant's charge and the target of 85% to 90%, we're really looking at an effective utilization of about 87.5%. So the chart on the right is just an example of a four-section or four-classroom-per-grade school. If you load each classroom at 21 and you have four classrooms, you're going to have 84, which is going to yield the typical 504 school with an average class size of 21 students per classroom. The chart on the right just shows if you were to look at maximum capacity and then sort of the approach that Pat and I have used for our careers where you take an 85% to 90% utilization, you end up with a target enrollment range of about 490 to 518 or a class size between 20.5 and 21.5, really talking about the same things overall, but really aligning with that charge of 85% to 90% overall for utilization. So as we work our way through tonight's program, when you see 100% of the operational capacity, what that really is, is that's hitting that class size target of 21 students per classroom across the board. And it's really kind of that ideal number that we're striving for, giving us that effective utilization of 87.5% for each building. All right, now to get into some of the nuts and bolts of the planning, and I won't spend a lot of time talking about each program that's in the building, but this is just the result of a process that we went through over the fall in order to be able to define capacities for each of the buildings and define capacities that take into account all of the programming that's in that building. So what we're calling out across the top are those certain district-wide programs that are in each of the buildings that take space in each of the buildings, typically in the form of full-size classrooms. So part of the charge for us as a consultant and looking forward as part of the long-range planning is to be able to build in future space for program expansion, and you'll see that in that little teal line down at the bottom, where we have a total that's different than what we're showing as the total existing seat capacity in each of the schools. So right now, we have just under 4,900 seats. When we add in additional nine classrooms or take them out of those available instructional classrooms, we're deducting about 190 seats from that overall capacity for K5 students, yielding a capacity of about 4,700 seats across the elementary schools. So as we begin looking at our planning, it's really that teal color line is what we're using for that district-wide number across the board, and it builds in all of these planned program expansions that we were asked to be able to look at, as well as working with the district and finding what the best location for them, not only within the building, but within the different buildings themselves as they feed up through middle school and high school. There was some purposefulness in where we were having the placement of those various programs that we worked through. Getting into one of the other key parts of the charge is the state racial balance law. For those that aren't familiar, I'll just do a really good job of summarizing the statute in only two bullets, but it's a very lengthy statute. Basically, the state mandates that any district, they look at those like grades. So for example, in elementary schools, a K5 grouping, you look at the racial composition as a whole of that student population, and then they compare across the board, are there any schools themselves which have a minority composition that's either 25 more or 25 less than that? And if the answer is yes, then you are in that racial imbalance category, which then requires that you submit a plan to the State Board of Ed to show how you're actively going to be able to address that imbalance. If you are a school within the district that has a racial composition that is a deviation of anywhere between 15% and 25% from that district-wide average, you're not required to submit a plan, but they then put you in this category of impending racial balance. So really, as we're working through those numbers and we're referencing the district-wide as well as the school-specific minority percentage and those deviations, you'll see where we're always targeting and really kind of highlighting that 25 number. And then for us, as part of the planning options, we really began looking at that 20% number there on the lower end of where we're looking to balance against. So this is a map of the entire community of Fairfield. What we did here was we have a large amount of information, including the student enrollment database for a number of years. This is just showing '22, '23 with a lot of student characteristics behind it, and we really kind of digitally just geocode our address, locate the students across the community. And then what we did was we intersected that with census block groups in order to create these planning blocks, as we call them, where there's the smaller geographies than the individual elementary attendance zones. But what it allows us to do is do some demographic analysis at a known geography to be able to look at areas within the community that are having a great influence on that racial imbalance in the schools. So what we're showing there in the red highlighted area is the -- are the census block groups that have a minority composition that's 25% or greater than the district-wide average. Some are as high as low 40% above that district-wide average. What we're also showing are, in gray, are those kind of, we'll call them balanced, those census block groups that fall within that lower limit, so they're really less than 15% from the district-wide average. And then we have these other categories being the light, the lightish gray or the light blue. Those are census block groups that are between 15% and 25% that are below the district-wide average, so their minority composition is much lower than the district-wide average, whereas in the brighter blue, they are that much larger than the district-wide average. And then we have this impending shown in more of the teal-ish color where they fall in that 15% to 25%. Why we're illustrating these blocks is because these are really kind of the basis when we begin putting some options together.
Sorry, Mrs. Maxine Canelli.
Can you just clarify, because this took me aback at first, that that lighter teal-colored on the map is towards the chart at the top left? You are not saying that those are the Holland Hill neighborhoods? Because that's what this looks like.
Census tracks.
I'm understanding it now, but at first I took back because it looked like you were saying that was Holland Hill, which it certainly is not.
So the color coding is just highlighting as an example in the chart. That's not Holland Hill in the upper northwest corner. Correct. Yes. Sorry for the confusion on that. So what this was, was this is really where we began breaking down those planning blocks and looked at logical pairings to be able to look at the demographics across the board and not going at the fine grain of street by street to begin our process of our approach of how best we wanted to be able to address the racial balance component of it. So this is just a summary of that initial analysis. What we found was that really it's -- the racial imbalance is a reflection of the neighborhood -- What we found was that really it's, the racial imbalance is a reflection of the neighborhood-based attendance zone, so it's when you basically group by geography and you group by street address in some of these areas that have logical boundaries. As we showed on the map, that area of blue is showing a larger concentration of minority students in some of those specific neighborhoods of McKinley and Holland Hill. And almost all the neighborhoods of McKinley have a significantly higher share of minority students than the district as a whole, and that's where I mentioned those that are over 40%. So that's over 40%, not minority, but over 40% above what the district-wide average is. And as I mentioned earlier, the trigger for action by the State Board of Ed is really 25% over the district-wide average, so these are 15 points above that. What we found and we've been looking at enrollment, we've been working in Fairfield for a number of years, really one of the best, one of the approaches that has come out of our past work is that you really need to begin looking at pairing neighborhoods of high concentration of minority students with those with low minority concentrations. And that pairing will allow to have a successful, long-term plan. We also found that when we went through various options in the past of just pairing two elementary schools together, we would always end up with two schools that are in that high impending category. So they would be below the 25%, but they would be above that 20% mark. And we know that the long-term sustainability of that just wasn't within the direction that the board wanted to go. And so as we began looking at our strategy to get this approach of running through these options, we realized that we need to be able to go through a process of placing some of these higher minority concentration neighborhoods in three elementary schools or creating satellite zones in order to be able to have something that is a non-traditional zoning, in order to be able to achieve that longer-term, sustainable racial balance, which we'll talk about as part of the three options we're presenting tonight. So really, in a nutshell, we have three families or three approaches. One of the parts of our charge from the board was looking at repurposing an elementary school as a pre-K center, so really going from an 11 elementary school alignment down to a 10 elementary school alignment. We were looking at repurposing one of the lower-capacity elementary schools, so that was Jennings and Dwight. We'll work our way through and talk about that process. We also introduced this new process shown in the middle, looking at satellite zoning. It's not something that we have looked at in the past as part of any of our other redistricting effort. And then last but not least, in the yellow color, we're looking at that traditional redistricting, which really has the contiguous attendance zones. I will say, as part of the process, we had really two major scenarios for each of those families, and then we had several sub-options where we had a lot of back and forth with the administrators in order to get to where we're at tonight of having the three most viable options presented. We also were able to weed through that process and make those decisions by creating the metrics for really ranking and scoring of our various scenarios. We took the objectives out of a lot of the language of the charge that the board provided us. The first piece is really addressing racial balance. So when we began looking at that, the good category shows that all schools are within that 20% district-wide average, and we used a five-year window as the proxy for that. The fair category looks at all schools being compliant with the state racial balance law, but we may have one or more schools that are greater than 25% or 20%, thank you. So they're falling in that 20% to 25% category. And then poor would be a scenario that we ran, and it did not be able to meet those objectives, and we weren't able to get the schools in compliance. And none of those are being presented tonight as part of it because that was really, they would not have met the charge. The other part was really to balance the utilization across all the elementary schools, and we used that, looking at being able to have plus or minus 5% of the district-wide average. We really kind of focused on the first five-year window for that because basically we're projecting out under these scenarios. And with any enrollment projections, your most accurate projections are always within your first five years. You have less assumptions, you have less unknowns, you have known students, you have known births. So we really looked at that five-year window for that. So our good metric for that was all schools are within 5% of the district-wide average utilization. Our fair metric were all schools were within 10% of the average, and then our poor category where some schools were greater than 10% of the district-wide average while some of them performed better. And these objectives aren't in any order of importance, we're just kind of listing them out here. The third objective that we looked at was minimizing the redistricting impact. This was the number of elementary students impacted, so our good category is looking at less than 10% of those students that are impacted by the redistricting. Our fair category is 11% to 20%, and then our poor would be greater than 20% of the students impacted. One of the other objectives was to minimize the impact to the walking communities around the schools. So we went through that same process, but putting the levers at 5% for the good category there, so less than 5% of the walkers as good, 6% to 10% of the walkers as fair, and then greater than 10% of the walkers as poor. And then last but not least was really getting an understanding of what the changes are going to be to the secondary feeder pattern, looking at what that impact is going to be for the middle school and high school students. So we qualitatively ranked those and scored those as part of the process. Want me to take this one? All right. All right. So as we worked our way through, we had six major scenarios with some sub-options there. We went through, and each one of them, we worked with the administrative team, we ranked, we scored, we came back, we made adjustments to them in order to see if we can get better performance, but ultimately, we ended up eliminating half of them. So what we wanted to present tonight was really the best option for each of those approaches. So under the repurposed facility as an ECC, we're presenting Scenario 1A. Pat will touch on, and I think in about eight or nine slides, Y1B, which involved the repurposing of Dwight, didn't score as highly as the repurposing of Jennings, so that one of repurposing of Dwight fell off the table. Satellite Zone, we've eliminated, Scenario 2, it had just too large of impacts. So Scenario 3, we will be presenting, and then for the traditional redistricting, we'll be presenting Scenario 4 for that. So we've kept our naming system the same, we didn't rename anything, so when you see us jump from 1A to 3, you didn't blink, you didn't miss anything, we've just eliminated those scenarios. With that, I'll pass it over to Pat, and he'll begin walking us through the scenarios.
Thanks, everybody. Pat Gallagher with the SLAM Collaborative. So we'll start by going through Scenario 1A. So Scenario 1A looks at repurposing Jennings as an early childhood center, which would convert the system to a 10 elementary school system. So we're looking at a comprehensive redistricting to both reassign the Jennings students who are in grades K through 5, as well as to address our racial and utilization balance goals. This was a scenario where we are recommending changes to the feeder pattern if it was to move forward, and I'll explain a little bit more of kind of the rationale and what proposed changes would be. And then the high school feeder pattern, we are remaining the same under this, so the elementary building blocks that you currently have feeding into certain high schools would be the same, just based on modified boundaries. So for all of the scenarios, we're going to present a similar type of information, so we're going to start with a map that just shows what those districts would look like hypothetically if they were in place today. Again, these are conceptual boundaries, so these are subject to further refinement as we've worked with the administration and the transportation folks to screen these in greater detail. We also have change area maps for all of these scenarios, and we have callouts showing the number of, for the elementary schools, the number of K4 students who are living in each area, knowing that 5th grade, if this were to be implemented, a 5th grade class wouldn't be impacted at the elementary level. So for Scenario 1A, we have several areas that would move. Overall, this impacts about 18% of our elementary students, and it impacts just about every school within Fairfield, whether they're sending students to a new school or receiving students. The schools with the greatest share of impacts are certainly Jennings, so the entirety of Jennings would be reassigned under this scenario, and that's about a third of our total impact under this scenario, so I'll use my pointer here. So under this scenario, Jennings would shift between McKinley here in the orange and Burr here in the blue, with roughly the northern half shifting to Burr and the southern half shifting to McKinley. And this creates kind of a series of other redistricting areas that we need to perform in order to make sure that we have utilization spread across all the buildings and we have enough space at the receiving schools for the Jennings students. So in order to accommodate those additional students at McKinley, we have to shift students out of McKinley, and under this scenario, we shifted students from McKinley to both Stratfield in the lime green and to Holland Hill in the red. And then we have a range of kind of smaller areas that we moved that really are helping balance utilization among the remaining schools. In order to accommodate the Jennings students at Burr, we did have to shift quite a large area within, that historically has gone to Burr into Dwight, so it's kind of this northwestern quadrant here with just under 100 K4 students. So overall, this does have a kind of a broad impact to all of the elementary schools, and this is consistent across both of the scenarios that we looked at where, when you're consolidating a facility, it really is a comprehensive redistricting that you need to look at. As Mike mentioned before, we worked with the administrative team to place special programs in their ideal facilities, and we reserved space to grow the special programs in the future as directed by your charge. I will note in a couple of instances where we do move programs between scenarios. So under this scenario, we are shifting the two CLC classrooms that would ideally be located at Jennings into North Stratfield, and that way it stays within the same feeder pattern. And then the other program that may shift from scenario to scenario is the Early Literacy Academy, so that, we're reserving a block of three classrooms together, and that program shifts, it's currently in McKinley, and that shifts from scenario to scenario really based on space availability. And so under this scenario, that program gets moved to Stratfield. Overall, our utilization, if this were in place this year, district-wide would be at about 89.5%, with all schools roughly within about 5% of the district-wide average. We did a seven-year look back to see how this scenario would have performed from a racial balance standpoint had these lines been in place. And this scenario performed very well in this metric, so all schools would have been in compliance with the state racial balance law, and no school would have exceeded 20% deviation from the district-wide average. So our highest deviation at any school is just over 17%, both at McKinley and Holland Hill. But what you'll note is that some years, those facilities wouldn't have even been in the impending category. So we feel that this is a sustainable solution to racial imbalance if this is the direction that the board wishes to go.
All right, Mrs. Kelly, yes, you have a question?
Just a quick question. If I look at this map really quickly, and I'm trying to just check off all the boxes, is Sherman the only school on here that's not?
I believe so, yes.
The only one that's not either moving to or adding in?
I'll have to confirm that, but I believe so, yeah.
Okay. Yes, okay. Thank you.
So for every scenario as well, we'll be presenting a utilization chart. So this takes our updated 10-year projections and compares that to the operational capacity. Again, 100% of the operational capacity would mean that all of the available grade-level classrooms are loaded at 21 students, which is really that ideal planning target. So we strive to not exceed 100% by more than just a couple percentage points. So in this scenario, all schools again stay roughly within about 5% of that district-wide average over the first five years of the projections where we have the greatest confidence. We do have two schools that are, or three schools, excuse me, that are reaching just about 100%, slightly over, over the last few years of the projections. Again, it wasn't, it didn't rise to the level of being a concern for us, but that's one of the challenges with converting to a 10 elementary school system is that your overall utilization increases. By year 10, we're looking at a overall utilization of about 97% spread across all of your buildings, so it would be challenging to hit every one of those below 100%.
Yeah, and I will add, just for the projection, so as we went through the enrollment projections that we presented, I believe it was last June, we did just a minor update to give an extra year on those to bring them out to 32, 33 to have full 10-year, but we also included in there any of the students generated from the planned housing developments. So especially in this option where you see Holland Hill and Burr getting up near that 100%, that's really dependent on those planned housing developments going forward and then generating the number of students that were estimated by the planning department in Fairfield.
Just a quick follow-up on that, if I may, please. When you used the enrollment projections that we got last June, did you use the low, medium, or high? I presume you used the medium, but I want to clarify that that's the case that you used for the enrollment.
Correct, we used the medium.
You did? Okay, thank you.
So as I mentioned in the intro to this scenario, this was the only of the scenarios that we looked at where we believe that a modification to the middle school feeder pattern is really warranted. So under this scenario, if you recall, we're shifting the Jennings student population into Burr and McKinley. The Fairfield Woods Middle School is located within the Jennings attendance zone, and we felt it was really important to not impact those students in the middle school as well within the Jennings community, but also to preserve that walking community around the Fairfield Woods Middle School. And so in keeping with kind of your traditional approach, we've used the elementary schools as your building blocks for your middle school feeder, but we have switched Burr and McKinley into Fairfield Woods, preserving that walking community, and shifted Holland Hill and Osborn Hill into Tomlinson. So this map shows just a visual of that impact. The areas in the hashed red are areas that would shift to a different middle school compared to today. You can see we've preserved this area here around Fairfield Woods Middle School by shifting McKinley and Burr into Fairfield Woods. But we do have quite a lot of disruption, roughly 23% of your middle school students would be impacted if you didn't do any grandfathering. And so it's quite a large percentage, and that includes the areas that we're shifting within the feeder. So all of Holland Hill and all of Osborn Hill would shift to a different middle school as well as the portions of Burr and McKinley that currently don't attend Fairfield Woods. And for the middle school and high school impacts, we'll caveat that the true redistricting impact is going to be dependent on the grandfathering approach that the district takes. We know that that's going to be something that'll be looked at over the summer from a cost standpoint. So from, yes. So the high school feeder pattern is unchanged based on the elementary building blocks, so the current elementary schools that feed into two high schools would be the same. Jennings is in the Fairfield Ward attendance zone, so there would be fewer schools feeding into Fairfield Ward compared to today. And this map here shows the areas of change. It's less than the middle school impacts, so roughly 4% of high school students would be impacted without grandfathering, and the two areas that would shift would be this area in the northwest corner here that shifts between Burr and Dwight. So this would shift between Ward to Ludlow, and then another area shifting from Ward to Ludlow in the southern part of, I believe it's McKinley attendance zone right around Fairfield Metro. And then we also prepared middle school and high school projections for each scenario, working with the administration just to do a gut check and make sure that there were no concerns. So with this option, we do have, as has kind of been the tradition in Fairfield, two larger middle schools with Fairfield Woods and Fairfield Ludlow being the two largest middle schools, and then Tomlinson being the smallest, although in any given year, Tomlinson may be slightly larger than Fairfield Woods. One impact, moving down to a 10 elementary school system and maintaining the high school feeder, is that you will have one larger high school than the other, so Fairfield Ludlow being about 300 to 350 students on average higher than Fairfield Ward. So Fairfield Ludlow would average about 1,500 students compared to Fairfield Ward, which would be between 1,100 and 1,200. And that's largely driven by the consolidation of the elementary facility and maintaining the feeder lines. So at the end of each scenario, we present just our scorecard with some of our key takeaways and considerations for this. So this option did perform well on the racial imbalance metric with all schools within compliance and no school exceeding 20% over the last seven years. compliance and no school exceeding 20% over the last seven years. From a utilization balance standpoint, it also performs quite well with all schools plus or minus 5% of the district-wide average. And the benefit of having Jennings as an ECC compared to Dwight, I'll get into on the next slide. But a portion, or one of the benefits is that it does allow you to have some room for expansion should pre-K be expanded in the future. We reserve nine classrooms in the elementary schools, so repurposing would give you a little more flexibility should that program expand in the future. The racial balance and utilization balance metrics, though, come with quite significant impacts. So this scenario would impact about 18% of elementary students and obviously that would be felt most in Jennings with the loss of the repurposing of the elementary school. We also have some Walker impacts that we can avoid. So the Jennings-Walker community, we tried to shift those to other schools that they could walk to to the greatest extent possible, but ultimately we did end up impacting some elementary walkers. About 5% of your total walking community would need to be bused. And then the disruption to the middle school feeder pattern, so a change in your traditional elementary feeder into the middle school is certainly something of note we wanted to, you know, highlight in this scenario. And then depending on the implementation approach, up to 23% of middle school students could be impacted should this move forward and 4% of high school students. So we wanted to just talk a little bit about why we went with Scenario A as our best performing scenario compared to Scenario 1B, which looked at the repurposing of Dwight. And there were several reasons. I think the biggest, one of the biggest negatives is that we weren't able to address racial imbalance in a sustainable manner at McKinley and Holland Hill. So in that scenario, we were able to get in compliance with 25%, but we were hovering awfully close to 25% both at McKinley and Holland Hill. And that just comes down to the location of the school. Repurposing Jennings allows you to shift much of that Jennings community into McKinley to help address racial balance. Repurposing Dwight doesn't give you that same advantage of directly shifting students into McKinley. And it roughly had the same elementary impacts in terms of redistricting, but not the added benefit of addressing racial balance in a sustainable manner. The location of Jennings is also more ideal relative to your pre-K population, so much more centrally located and in a more dense neighborhood. And then another challenge with Dwight is that currently there's no accessible ground floor classrooms compared to Jennings, which does have some accessible ground floor classrooms, and so that would require a more substantial fit out of that space to make it appropriate for an ECC. So some of our other just general considerations, repurposing Dwight would result in a greater impact to your high school students, but fewer impacts to your middle school because we wouldn't, we would not propose a change in the feeder pattern at the middle school like we did for the repurposing of Jennings. And then just kind of an overall finding was that reducing to 10 elementary schools impacts your enrollment balance at middle and high schools. So we did several iterations and sub-iterations of this concept and inevitably it shifts more students into a certain middle school or a certain high school. So that's just one of the kind of stipulations regardless of how you slice it and dice it. And then again, as I highlighted earlier, repurposing a school results in a district-wide utilization of 97%, so it's below your operational target, but it provides less buffer and less flexibility for enrollment growth or program growth.
Mrs. Kelly?
Just real quick, and I apologize if it's in here and I just missed it. Do we have what the utilization rate of Jennings is in this scenario or is that not part of just, I'm just, how empty it's going to be?
As an ECC.
An ECC, yes.
So we were reserving the nine classrooms for ECC as, that was what was in the charge. So how much it's used is going to be dependent on the size of the ECC. I do have a chart, I can show at least the number of classrooms in the building, which is, it has 23 full-size classrooms today. So we're going to jump ahead to Scenario 3, but just wanted to, for ease of following along, put a quick slide on Scenario 2. So that was another option where we looked at satellite zoning. This had the benefits of Scenario 3, but had greater impact. And so ultimately, we decided to go ahead with Scenario 3, which I will get to on the next slide. Satellite zoning is not something we've looked at when we've done this exercise for Fairfield in the past. So satellite zoning essentially is creating non-contiguous areas that get sent to a particular elementary school, and I think it'll be more evident when I show the map and I'll touch on that there. But really, the impetus for this scenario was to see if we could try to minimize disruption to students. So under this scenario, we strove to move as few students as possible while providing our, hit meeting our racial balance goals. And then to add to that, we focused on redistricting only within existing middle school and high school feeders so that we could minimize or eliminate impacts to middle and high school altogether. And then secondly, minimizing impacts to walkers. So satelliting, again, that's another potential benefit is that it allows you to satellite areas that can't walk to a school and thus minimize impacts in that way. And like the other scenarios, we are preserving space for expansion of special programs. So we're shifting, or growing pre-K in Holland Hill, Stratfield and Jennings, and then shifting Early Literacy Academy from McKinley to Burr to leverage the available space in that facility. So I think this map helps highlight what satellite zoning is. So essentially, it creates non-contiguous areas. So you'll notice here, we have two satellites under Scenario 3, a McKinley satellite zone, which is carved out of Stratfield in orange up here, and a Stratfield satellite zone, which is carved out of McKinley. And those get sent to different schools. And why those areas were chosen, one, they are not walking communities to their existing elementary school, and two, the demographics of those neighborhoods allowed us to address racial balance. So you'll notice in this map, we have fewer moved areas compared to Scenario 1A. Overall, this moves about 9% of our elementary students and we have our two satellite zones here. So we would shift about 83 students from Stratfield to McKinley and then a slightly larger area shifting about 108 students from McKinley to Stratfield. And then we have three other areas that we shifted within this scenario and they're really not depend, or they're not, these areas were not shifted for racial balance purposes, it was more for utilization balance within the buildings. So they're not necessarily dependent on the satellite zones, they could be independent or implemented separately. So for this option, again, I'll highlight that we shifted the Early Literacy Academy into Burr. Burr does have a lower utilization than the other schools and that was kind of our trade-off for trying to minimize impacts is that you're not going to get all schools necessarily within 5% of the district-wide average. Shifting Early Literacy Academy does help us use some of that space efficiently, but not enough to get within 5% of the district-wide average. This scenario, like Scenario 1A, works very well from a racial imbalance standpoint. So all schools would have been below the 25% mandate, but we also would have been below 20% in all schools over the last seven years with a maximum of just over 18% at McKinley in the 2020 school year. But some years under this scenario, Holland Hill and McKinley wouldn't have even been in the impending category. So again, this performs well and we see this again as a viable long-term option. So this just shows our utilization balance. And as I mentioned, looking at our one-year snapshot, this does have, I'll call it underutilized Burr with the first five years averaging just under 80% utilization compared to a district-wide average of about 88%. So we're at about, just over 8% lower than the district-wide average. And then that does creep up closer to the district-wide average over the last few years as we start accounting for some of those students in future housing developments that are in the Burr attendance zone. And then I will note Osborn Hill as the only school that hits our 100% operational target for three years, but we don't exceed over 100%. We're basically at 100%, which again is equivalent to 21 students per classroom. So one of the benefits to this option is that we are only shifting students between elementary schools that are in the same middle school. And so this doesn't have any impacts to the geography or the feeder pattern. So by address, your address would be in the same middle school as it is today under this scenario. And so there's no grandfathering that would be required. And then similarly, we were able to eliminate any impacts to the high school. Again, we only shifted areas that attend the same high school and so no grandfathering would be required at the high school as well. So this again is just our kind of gut check, doing the what-if analysis and largely on the same trajectory as today for the middle school and high school. So our key considerations for Scenario 3, we're maintaining our 11 elementary school alignment. We hit our racial balance goal. Again, it performs well and we believe it's, you know, we have adequate buffer to feel confident that it's going to be a long-term solution. And we're really minimizing impacts to elementary students and not impacting middle school and high school at all. And that really is the trade-off with utilization balance. If you are okay with some schools being a little bit less utilized, it can help reduce the redistricting impact. If we have to get all schools really tight to the district-wide average, it's going to result in greater redistricting impact. So it's just kind of the give and take of our, of our planning process and one of the And again, we have kind of two reasons for moving elementary students. One is for the racial imbalance with the satellite zones, but also some smaller shifts in the Dwight and Jennings areas that, you know, an alternative could be to build special programs based for CLC or ECC as part of those projects. You know, they're in the Capital Waterfall, that could help further reduce some of those small pockets in the elementary zones as well if that gets accounted for in your facility planning. Oh yeah, and then we, in this scenario, we have less than 1% of walkers impacted. We have a handful that we, that are really at the edges that we feel confident that through the refinement process over the summer, we can eliminate any impacts to walkers under this scenario as well. So Scenario 4 gets us into our traditional redistricting family of options. So we looked at kind of two major options, Scenario 4 and Scenario 5. Scenario 4 being our better performing options. And this is an approach that we've looked at a number of times over the years in Fairfield and similar results to those historic exercises. So contiguous zones basically means we're, all elementary districts have to be contiguous and touching in some manner. And so that's largely the difference between Scenario 3 and Scenario 4. And in order to maintain that contiguous area, we have to move a lot more areas. And the biggest challenge is that you have to, in order to balance McKinley, you have to shift students out of McKinley and into McKinley. And there's only certain facilities that have the space to accommodate shifts. Otherwise, it creates this domino effect where then you're kind of impacting one school, which then impacts the next school, which then impacts the next school. And so this ends up being kind of a comprehensive redistricting scenario where just about every facility and part of Fairfield would be touched in some way, shape, or form. And so overall, this scenario has about 15% of elementary students that are impacted. And unlike some of the other maps that have larger areas, we have a lot of small pockets here where we're moving smaller peer groups of students, which is always a consideration as part of our redistricting plan. Larger peer groups, you know, makes the transition easier if you're shifting with a larger number of students in your class. So in order to maintain the contiguous districts, we're moving more smaller areas compared to satelliting. The greatest share of impacts would be in, you know, largely on the eastern part of town with McKinley, North Stratfield, Holland Hill, and Osborn Hill having the largest share of the total impact. And this shows the map. We strove to maintain kind of logical boundaries to the extent possible and walking populations, but to hit the balance, the racial and enrollment balance, you know, there's some areas where it's really difficult to do that. And so there'll be kind of some neighborhoods that, if you look at the map, they might look kind of funny, but it was in, you know, in our kind of planning process necessary to hit the enrollment and racial balance metrics. So under this scenario, we are shifting the Early Literacy Academy into North Stratfield. All the other special programs are in the same facilities as the previous scenarios. And again, we're able to get all schools within 5% utilization of the district-wide average, so plus or minus 5% of 86% overall. And again, a number of times over the years, we've looked at traditional redistricting as a potential approach and we've probably done, you know, over 10 options over the years looking at this. And the conclusions have largely been the same from a racial balance standpoint where we can get you below 25, but it's really difficult to get below 20. And so under this option, we'd be in compliance with the state racial balance law, but Holland Hill and McKinley would both be impending imbalance and both schools at some point in the last seven years would have exceeded 20, they'd be between 20 and 25% of the district-wide average. So this would have worked, but it may not provide that future-proofing to be kind of a long-term solution. This shows projected utilization, where again, we're doing quite well on the utilization metric standpoint, each facility roughly plus or minus 5% of the district-wide average over that first five-year period. And no schools are projected to exceed 100% of their operational target. So this option does have some impacts to the middle schools, so about 7% of your middle school students would be impacted without grandfathering. And we have a couple of different areas that are shifting, which are called out in the red here. We have a couple areas that are shifting into Tomlinson. We have areas from Fairfield Woods, Roger Ludlow, and then areas from Fairfield Woods to Tomlinson on the east part of town as well. They're relatively small areas, so between 5 and 25 or so students. And then also shifting the middle school lines here between Fairfield Woods and Tomlinson, where we shifted students out of McKinley. Again, some smaller areas, so peer group size is certainly a consideration. And then an area shifting between Fairfield Woods and Roger Ludlow. And then impacts to about 5% of high school students. So primarily shifting from Fairfield Ludlow into Fairfield Ward, these areas that are, with the red cross hashes that are colored purple, would shift into Fairfield Ward and then offset by a small but quite densely populated area around the I-95 corridor here that would shift from Fairfield Ward to Ludlow. So from a middle and high school standpoint, this would also have kind of a larger Fairfield Woods, larger Roger Ludlow, and a smaller Tomlinson. And then it would shift some additional students into Fairfield Ludlow, but overall, the shifts somewhat counterbalance each other and Fairfield Woods would gain slightly more than it sends to Fairfield Ward and would be larger by about 150 students on average over the 10-year period. So our key takeaway is for Scenario 4, we maintain all 11 elementary schools. We're in the fair category for our racial imbalance where we would have been in compliance, but we are exceeding 20% in one or more years and that's both at McKinley and at Holland Hill. And again, this is consistent with the exercises we did in 2016 and 2020 where it's just, just the density and the demographics of certain neighborhoods makes it really challenging to maintain those contiguous zones while hitting all of the other objectives. From a utilization balance standpoint, this does well as well, all schools within plus or minus 5%. And we retain contiguous neighborhood-based attendance zones compared to satellite zones, but we do have a greater impact to students, so about 15% of elementary students, and also greater impacts to walkers. And I failed to mention that when we were on the maps, but in order to do all those small pocket moves, we're impacting some walking students in order to hit our racial balance metrics. So we're impacting about 6% of the universe of elementary walkers would have to be bused. So certainly one of the negative considerations here. And then compared to Scenario 1A, we have fewer middle school impacts, about 7%, but obviously greater than Scenario 3, and about 5% of high school impacts. And so this summary here just gives a comparison. And so, this summary here just gives a comparison of our three best-performing scenarios, so the best-performing scenarios in each of these three families. And I think it really, it comes down to kind of weighing the different metrics against one another. So, you'll notice no scenario got good scores across the board. So, each performed good in at least one metric. Two had goods in three metrics. And I think probably the, one of the biggest takeaways is the trade-off between utilization and racial balance and redistricting impacts. So, if you address utilization balance, if you kind of maximize the utilization across all the buildings and are efficient, we have greater impacts. If we're okay with a little bit greater of a spread between facilities, it results in a lower impact. That was one of the key trade-offs we've kind of learned as part of this exercise. And then, just to kind of compare, our greatest elementary redistricting impact would be in Scenario 1A. The lowest would be Scenario 3. And then Scenario 3 is the only one that didn't perform well in the, it's in the fair category in the utilization balance. Scenario 1A and 3 would both scored in the good category for racial balance compared to Scenario 4, which was in the fair category. And then the walker impacts, Scenario 3 had the least impacts. Scenario 1A had more impacts but was still in the good category. And Scenario 4 was in the fair category with over 5%. And then finally, to sum up the secondary school impacts, the only changes to the feeder pattern are proposed under Scenario 1A where we modified a middle school feeder pattern, resulting in the greatest middle school impacts. No changes to either the feeders or attendant zones for Scenario 3, so no grandfathering required. No changes to the feeder pattern in Scenario 4, but by shifting the elementary lines, we are impacting about 7% of middle schoolers and 5% of high schoolers.
Sorry. All right. Thank you very much. I'm sure we have lots of questions. I'd like to do this in a little bit of a orderly fashion, probably by scenario, but if anyone has any questions just to start us off with before we get to the scenarios on like the first 10 pages or so of like context and content, Mrs. Gerber.
Thank you. I guess my question is just overall, I'm sure there are people all over Fairfield right now looking to try to figure out if their street is on one of these redistricting things. When will we have street names? When will we have more specifics? Because obviously, that's something that we need to understand and that, you know, to be transparent, so does everyone else who's reading these who probably is trying to figure out what, whether they're being impacted or not. So, when will we have more specific information?
Sorry. Yeah, we had talked about, these haven't gone through a transportation audit yet, so they're going to be subject to change based on like busing and does this, does this geography make sense to even move to this school or can a bus not be able to pick them up? So, if, I guess the question becomes to the administration and the board of, they will likely get changed over the course of July as we work through the operation analysis. So, we could, you know, set up the platform, share it, but realize that the community may see a change on the map that we're showing now that may ultimately not be there after we go through that more detailed work.
No, and I totally understand that. And just from 20 years ago, the last time there was a redistricting, there were multiple lists, but they all had street names. And obviously, it was like a game, you know, is my street on this list? But I think it is important for people to understand. I mean, you can't really tell from these maps specifically who's impacted or not.
Yeah, we're trying to just give a gist of the general areas, but I think we could have that for the next board meeting, up and running. I believe it's going to be in about two weeks. But just we'll put a disclaimer on it that, you know, as we work our way through the refinement, they may change.
No, and absolutely, totally understand that it's all subject to change and I realize that these are just preliminary things. But I mean, I know for myself that I would really like to know exactly where the streets are just because I know the town fairly well and it would be helpful just to understand, like you said, do these things really make sense in terms of is a neighborhood being split in two or three or that type of a thing? I mean, you can't totally tell from these maps. So, I think if we could get that sooner than later, that would be really helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, just as a counterpoint to that, I agree with Mrs. Gerber that that's what the public's going to want to know. On the other hand, I actually kind of agree with what you did here because this is going to come down to what are we philosophically going to support? And whichever one we philosophically support, then we'll get into the granular detail of is it that street or that? Because obviously, I mean, Mrs. Gerber is absolutely correct, you know, something that may have looked reasonable to you, when you actually see that street, you know, it doesn't make sense for whatever reason. So, I actually appreciate that this is at the, you know, 30,000-foot level because we ultimately have to decide which approach do we want and then boil down. Because I would hate to think, and this is unfortunate, no matter what we do, it's going to happen to some degree, that somebody will tune out the moment they think their street isn't impacted. And the next discussion, it's back in play again. And that to me would be the, an unfortunate byproduct of providing those street names. But I think it's probably a bit of you're damned if you do, if you're damned if you don't. But again, I do actually appreciate this approach.
Mr. Peterson.
Hi, thank you for this. Just general observation, there are things I like in each one of these and there are things that frighten me in each one of these, and it's probably what I should have expected all along. So, it's going to be interesting going through this. Just on a broad conceptual basis, you mentioned a couple of times about satellite zones that you've not looked into these in the past. I'm assuming that you mean you've not looked into these in the past for Fairfield. Is this something that other districts around the state or other districts in your experience and that you've done plans for have worked with?
Yeah, there's other districts in the state that have had satellite zones for a number of years. There's ones that we've implemented as part of plans. It all depends on is it the right tool in each circumstance? And I think here, we try to stick with the traditional neighborhood contiguous zones. And then when we begin really looking at satellite zones, we were able to check more good boxes and have less of an impact by doing it that way. So, that's what we wanted to bring forward for discussion tonight.
No, that's great. I just want to make sure that, like, we understand this is not, we're not really breaking new ground here, making, breaking new ground somewhat for Fairfield. We do have that Jennings District now, which is technically contiguous but not really. But just, this is something that other districts have done and we can look to their experience.
Yeah, correct.
Follow-up?
Yes. To follow up on that, but isn't the satellite zones just a different name for pocket redistricting, which you absolutely have brought to this board before? I guess, what's the difference?
Sure. So, I would say pocket redistricting is shifting small areas as opposed to kind of larger blocks. So, when we kind of talk about pocket redistricting in the industry, it's more about kind of the size and scale of the areas that you're moving. So, rather than kind of a blank canvas, we're kind of doing surgical changes as opposed to satellite zones, which just is kind of more of the contiguity.
Yeah, and a pocket would typically be, it would make it contiguous with the neighboring zone. You're just moving a smaller area. I think Pat mentioned it, as part of Scenario 4, we had a lot of smaller peer groups. So, we're moving these little pockets of students in various areas to minimize the impact to the walking community as well as addressing the utilization versus in some of the options where you see a larger block of, say, 70, 80, 90 students that wouldn't be a pocket, that's almost like a block redistricting.
Okay. And then, thank you for clarifying that. But to that point, at any point, did you consider a combination of the traditional and the satellite zones? Because obviously, you could have gotten that space utilization much closer to the goal that, you know, we had set out if you included that as well. Just wondering if that, why that didn't factor into these.
Yep. So, that was one of our scenarios that we didn't show tonight, but working with the administration, that was kind of the main impetus is that we had a, a kind of a hybrid approach where we're using satellite zones for McKinley, but then we're doing pockets to balance the other schools out. But ultimately, it kind of came down to a, are we moving areas just to hit the utilization target or are we moving areas because there's overcrowding at a facility? And ultimately, because we didn't have any facilities that were, in our view, over-enrolled, we felt it was better to present the option that moved the fewest students. So, is it possible to mix and match? Certainly.
When we did do the mix and match, we had a lot larger impact on the walking community as well, which was one of our objectives. And in Scenario 3 where we rely more heavily on the satellite, we're about, I think we're just less than 1% of the walking community impacted.
And to add to that, it does impact the middle and high school too. When you're starting to do pockets on top of the satellites, it's harder to, because the biggest challenge is you have Stratfield and McKinley and Burr that are a middle school. And so, if we want to preserve the middle school attendant zones, we can't just kind of hop over Jennings or North Stratfield to get students from McKinley and Stratfield into Burr just because of geography. It just didn't make sense from a, just from a transportation standpoint. So, there would have to be some impacts to the middle and high school as well. So, that was another one of our kind of negative checks.
Mrs., sorry. Do you have a follow-up or is it a new question? Mrs. Rattelli was waiting. Okay, Mrs. Rattelli first and then I'll come back to you, Mr. Asa.
Sorry. Forgive me because this all moves so fast that I feel like there's so much in here that I haven't gone through. So, I just need to get clarification on the ECC numbers because, and I don't have the handouts with me from our facilities meetings before, but it wasn't nine classrooms total. I thought it was almost nine additional classrooms from what we currently have because I know that in facilities, we were talking about ideally having at least 16, if I remember correctly, classrooms. That would be not just classrooms but OTPT, speech, social work. And so, in a lot of these scenarios, does that include keep, I mean, obviously not Scenario 1A, but the other scenarios, does that include keeping the ECC Ward? So, it's ECC Ward that has five classrooms and one CLC with nine other classes distributed through the other schools?
Can I speak to that and then, all right. Hi, Rob Mancuso, Executive Director, Special Education. I believe you're accurate. I am, I'm trying to retrieve my memory too. I think it's nine additional classes.
Nine total.
That we need additionally on top of the 10 that we currently have in the two sites that we occupy. And I think the discussion previously was, you know, trying to get to that 50/50 ratio and looking at expanding our program for students who may need a full four-year-old program or a full integrated three- or four-year-old program. So, I think it's nine additional, but I think Scenario 1A would be able to accommodate that.
You're correct. It is nine additional and I, I'm going to squint, actually, I can see that around here. I'm holding a lot of things. Yeah, it's nine total, five additional for pre-K, but it's nine, for all the programs, it's nine additional because we're adding two CLC.
But excluding ECC.
We added five additional pre-K to our charge, to the existing, that we have currently.
Yes.
So, though, so the scenarios, the three and four with the nine classrooms are in addition to keeping the Ward site?
Get to that scenario. Just want to get through the first like 13 pages. Anyone have anything on page, oh, sorry, Mr. Asa, yep?
To the Madam Chair, can you please just clarify for the board and the public the process because there's way too much information in here for me to start formulating logical questions? So, can you just explain how the process will work as far as the board having an opportunity to submit questions in advance of the next meeting where we will obviously be having a robust discussion?
Yes. So, we're going to go through any questions that people have this evening. This evening, the board will be sent a spreadsheet much like we do with our budget, where board members will be able to input any questions on this presentation in general or particular to any scenario. We're going to ask that those questions be submitted by next Monday morning so that we can get it back to SLAM so they have the week, next week, to work on their answers and get those back to us before our next meeting on the 27th. Our guests will be returning to meet with us on the 27th again in order to answer any follow-ups to those questions that everyone had because usually people ask questions and then they might have follow-ups. So, they're going to be rejoining us again at the 27th when we are meeting at Ward. So, no need to worry about asking everything this evening, but obviously, we want to give the board any opportunity that they have right now while we have them here and we will proceed in that manner. Mr. Peterson.
Just to note on that point, next Monday is Juneteenth. Is that going to impact our timeline for getting things in?
No, Mr., we'll be able to send the spreadsheet over to SLAM next Monday, correct? Yes, we will. Okay, so back to our presentation. Anything on 11 or, sorry, 12 or 13?
Ms. Jacobson? Can I just ask over, the working group for the district, who was on that group? Just so the public knows in terms of.
Oh, who were having, the administrative, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, the administrative team that was referenced, the working group that.
Myself, Angela, and Rob.
And I apologize for not bringing our original charge. I thought that we had adding on to an existing building. Was there any discussion to that?
So, that was if we needed, if we couldn't close one, would there be an option where, I mean, if we could close one but we needed more space, then what closing would afford? But it seems that that wasn't necessary for these presentations to do so.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to get that on the record.
Anything on objectives or scenario comparisons? Otherwise, we'll go into the first scenario, 1A. Mrs. Gerber.
Just procedurally, I know myself, I'm not really prepared to ask a lot of specific questions about any of these scenarios and knowing that we are on item two of our very lengthy agenda, I'm just wondering if it would be better use of our time unless, and if everyone else has specific questions, then I will defer to that. But I just feel like this is setting us up for a very long and not very constructive evening as opposed to going home, really digging deep, and then starting to put questions on the Google Doc.
Yeah. I mean, if anybody has any questions, happy to entertain them now.
Can I follow up to that and say 100% agree? And it's not because I don't want to ask questions, but I really need a couple of days to digest this. And I think the public does too.
All right. Anyone have any questions for, on the rest of this presentation? Yes, Mrs. Guernsey.
I just wanted to add a point. It's not really a question, but a point to the public about how important it is to sort of get this firsthand information because I have noticed that in some of the news sources, it has been inaccurate. So, just to kind of clear that up, I don't even, to make sure that you're looking at primary source documents, watching these meetings and looking directly at our sources and not getting your information unfortunately from some of our local news, which I've asked them to make corrections and they have not responded to me.
Mr. Asa.
Can I just make one more comment or suggestion to, through you to the superintendent? And I don't know what communication method you choose, but I think it's important for people that are looking at this slide deck to have context. And I think you get some of that with the actual verbal presentation. So, if we do send out any communication post this meeting, maybe we can include a link to the recording of this meeting so that people not only have the slide deck, but they can easily access without having to search through pages to get it.
All right. Well, thank you to our guests for coming. I'm going to walk through a little bit more detail with the board in a second, but appreciate you coming. We will get you our Q&amp;A, welcome you back at our next meeting on the 27th. And thank you very much for your work on this and coming this evening. So, to the board, we're going to fill out our Q&amp;A. To the public as well, our next meeting on the 27th is going to be at the Ward Auditorium. That's, was a decision made so that we could accommodate a lot more people if people wanted to come and provide public comment on the 27th and listen to some of the discussion on the questions and answers in the first rounds of that. And then we'll get a better idea going into the summer. The administration will be doing some work on this during the summertime and we will have more meetings in the summertime. We're having a July 25th Community Conversation Virtual so that everyone can participate in that from wherever you may be, where you can engage in questions and answers with the board and have conversation. And then we will head into the beginning of the school year in the fall. But our timeline is available and all the information will be posted on our redistricting page on the website. Fairfield Public Schools Facebook page also disseminates a lot of this information where you can access it, but I would echo Mrs. Guernsey's sentiment and to really focus on primary source information and make sure you're getting all the right accuracies. Mr. Asa. Oh. Oh, I thought you had your hand up. Okay, all right. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to old business. Adoption of Policy 3000 Goals and Objectives for Non-Educational Business Operations. Recommended motion that the Board of Education adopt Policy 3000 Goals and Objectives for Non-Educational Business Operations. Can they get a motion? Mr. Peterson, seconded by Mrs. Max and Cannelly. Any discussion?
Yeah, I didn't receive any questions about this, but as always, open to hear it now.
Any? Nope, all right, take it to the public. Any public comment on this policy? No, back to the board, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Approval of Math Curriculum and Resources. Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the math curriculum and resources for Foundations of Algebra for the Implementation Year of 2324, Algebra I and Algebra I-H, 2324, Geometry and Geometry, I-H, 2425, Algebra II and Algebra II-H, 2627. Can I get a motion, please? Mr. Asa, seconded by Mr. Peterson. Any discussion? Sorry, Mrs. Kelly.
Sorry, I just wanted to follow up on what I had asked when we talked, and I, maybe it's not appropriate, but I just wanted to throw it out there, when I talked about possible 3 and 2 acceleration, and I forget the woman who had addressed that. I apologize, I forgot her name. But, you know, we talked about eventually that would be something she would consider, and I would fully support that, but I was just wondering, when we talk, this is more philosophical, I guess, when we talk about, oh, yeah, that would be nice, does this, like, that's nice, Chrissy, but we have to wait now another 10 years before we review the math curriculum? Or that's nice, and it's a real possibility in the foreseeable future? I was just wondering if there was?
James Zavajancik, Chief Academic Officer. We're always looking at the curriculum. We are awaiting our new Executive Director of Math and STEM to come on board as well to review it, and when she meets with the departments, it will be a consideration if it's something they'd want to move forward with. And we're also looking at the curriculum review cycle holistically, so that there's not a 10-year gap between approval and the next one.
Anyone else? All right, we'll take it to the public. Any public comment on this item may come forward. If not, we'll take it back to the board, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, discussion of Policy 611, Student Calendar. Wait, did I miss something? Oh, sorry. Approval of a new business. Approval of Osborne Hill Elementary Roof Replacement Project Number 051-015RR. Recommended motion that the Board of Education accept Osborne Hill Elementary School Roof Replacement Project Number 051-0151RR as complete. Can I get a motion, please? Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Mrs. Rotelli. Any discussion? Mrs. Gerber.
Well, just to clarify, so this is, we're just accepting this is complete. It's the roof project that was desperately needed and has been completed, and all is well with the roof, and I don't know if it's in here anymore.
Mr. Testani, you want to take that?
As far as we're concerned, the project is complete, and there are no issues to speak of, so.
I mean, I'm assuming because it's on the agenda that it's complete, so that if there were any concerns?
Mr. Sal Marbina asked me to put, yes.
Right, exactly, okay.
Formalities, so they can file the paperwork with the state and whatnot, that the project is complete, exactly. All right, to the board. All in favor? Motion, I, motion passes unanimously. All right, discussion of Policy 6111, Student Calendar, and I am going to take this over to Mrs. Max and Cannelly, who requested this item be on our agenda this evening.
Yes, thank you. So just as a little bit of history, I've been asked as a policy chair to look at the student calendar a few times, and for no nefarious reasons, it hasn't come up. We generally, we are quite busy in policy, and the sustained time to look at it, it was, because there was no statute driving the policy change. Unfortunately, one of the byproducts of that is that it was a policy that was easy to put off, not through lack of interest, but through lack of sustained time, and again, statute compelling the discussion. So in the recent, most recent calendar vote that we took, the point I brought up several times is the reason for my opposition to the vote that we took, was that we had no criteria for making that decision, or none that I was aware of, and certainly none that were contained in policy. And I want to repeat what I sent in an email to my fellow board members. I have zero interest in relitigating a past argument at all. I believe that one of our jobs as a board member is to accept the will of the majority of the board, the majority spoke. I'm not arguing at all. However, we have many more topics that could come before this board, on the topic of the school calendar, religious holidays and nonreligious holidays, and various reasons. And nothing has changed about the fact that we have no policy reasons, no policy criteria established to render a future decision where we were in any way consistent with past practice, or for future board members, so that we, that this as a body could be consistent with past practice. Not that you can't change past practice, but regardless, there remain no criteria. And so what I was interested in, and I'm hoping each board member could offer something, because for me to bring this before the policy committee, as the one person who said, I don't understand the decision because we have no criteria, and I didn't vote in favor, not because I was not sympathetic, and again, I'll repeat what I said in that past discussion, I thought that the public handled themselves beautifully. It was a very cordial, very, I enjoyed the discussion, but I still don't know what prompted the thinking of my fellow board members. And so that would help, I believe, very much shape the conversation. It's only three members on the policy committee, and so to have one of those three completely in the dark as to the thinking of my fellow board members, I think that puts us at a disadvantage and makes us also very inefficient, because we're guessing, or else we're putting the load of eight members on two. And I didn't think that was fair to Mrs. Guernsey or Mrs. Jacobson as well, whose reasons may be similar to or different from the rest of the board. So I am looking to broaden the conversation, but again, I hope, I'm, on the one hand, not looking to put anyone on the spot, on the other hand, looking to put everyone on the spot of, what do you think should be the considerations of the policy committee in establishing a school calendar, making decisions for the school calendar? And I'll just throw out there a whole list of holidays, or a list of dates that could be part of that conversation, because keeping in mind, I do think, we all know, the school calendar is one of those things that gets the public engaged, the public has strong feelings about, the public is impacted by this calendar. What for one group might be a holiday, for another group, it could simply be, now I've got to come up with daycare for my child, you're pushing us later into June. All sorts of things are impacted by the calendar we vote on. So whether it's Columbus Day, Indigenous Peoples' Day, Veterans' Day, Election Day, Three Kings' Day, St. Patrick's Day, Holi, Diwali, Eid, all of these things that we've talked about come with implications, and so that is where I'd like to, I'm hoping each of you would be willing to share with me some thoughts that will feed into the discussion that I had promised the policy committee that we would have this discussion, and that's what I'm hoping to get some input on.
Thank you, Mrs. Max and Cannelly. Mr. Peterson.
All right, thank you. I'm happy to have this discussion. I, I'm, I'm happy to recapitulate the points that I made for the Eid discussion, which were, I felt that we, as a board, were capable of making this decision on a case-by-case basis. I felt like we didn't need an algorithm, and one was probably not feasible to do anyway. But I will tell you what impacted me most in that discussion, was seeing the attendance records and the number of children who opted out of school in order to attend religious observance. That, for me, almost more than anything else that the public settled, like, I completely agree, I believe the public engaged us in a very respectful and thoughtful manner. But ultimately, it was the, the impact that we have already seen on attendance that was dispositive for me. So, I mean, again, that's, that was the largest part of my thinking about it. I still have no objection to doing this on a case-by-case basis. I think this is where, you know, our longitudinal experience as a board comes into play. We've had a lot of discussions about the calendar. I think we're capable of doing that. And I also think that, you know, one of the things about Eid was that, you know, an organized community made the request of us. I don't, I don't know that because we made, we fulfilled one request, that we need to necessarily fulfill all requests. And again, I go back to, I just, I think we can handle this on a case-by-case basis, but I'm happy to have the discussion.
Just as a very quick follow-up, and then I really do want to remove myself from the conversation. I couldn't agree more that I'm not looking to establish strict data-driven criteria or anything. It really is, you know, but me being able to write down attendance records, that helps with making that decision. Sorry.
Mr. Asa.
I agree, and Jeff kind of took my point, but I think, looking at the data and looking at, historically looking back at how many kids are going to be absent on a specific day if it comes before us. So I think that absolutely, if there were to become a policy, and in your discussions, I think that the data on the attendance records should absolutely come into play. And I won't steal Mrs. Jacobson's thunder, but I do share some of the things that I know she wants to bring up, so that's all I'll say.
Mrs. Kelly.
I also agree with Jeff that I think these can be, these discussions can happen on a one-off basis, and I appreciate Ms. Max and Cannelly saying she doesn't want a rigid thing. I would, I would be concerned about putting in an official policy some sort of threshold based on population of either staff or students who are absent, because I guarantee you, if we look at that data, you know, the days when other schools have spring break and we don't, like, how many people extend that four-day weekend into the whole week, or into a fifth day? And if we look at that day, then is it like, well, then we may as well have the whole week? I just feel like, how many people take the day off after the Super Bowl? Like, I mean, there's just little statistics that if we look up, I think having that hard policy in writing, which I know you're saying you don't want rigid, but I think there's other things that would pop up that would unfortunately then fall into such a policy like that. And I just think that, you know, do you get into, well, if for everyone we add, we have to take one away? Like, I, I don't necessarily agree with that, but to avoid getting into, A, we're still going to school in July, like, I don't know if I would be opposed to that, but then we're pitting one over the other. So again, I kind of defer to what Jeff is saying, is like, that we can do it on a one-off basis. I understand wanting a policy, but I just think the calendar is fluid, and it's, I just, everything that we just said, so I'm good.
Mrs. Rotelli.
So I'm really going to repeat a lot of what's already been said, but just so you know how I feel. It was the data, for me. Obviously, we had an overwhelming response from the public, which I think also contributed to my decision, but when we were looking at the chart that we got of how many kids were absent, and how many families were absent that day, we were, it was hundreds compared to less than 10 for other holidays. And I do think the decision can be made in the future if it comes up on an individual basis, but really, that had a lot to do with my decision.
I mean, I feel like we're using a past vote, to use that. We said we weren't going to talk about the past vote, but that really is the starting point of this, and I'll repeat when I said that, and looking at the attendance data that we looked at for that particular holiday, compared to other religious holidays, there were significant. And that pretty much was it. And listening to, our board is responsible to, you know, listening to our community and diving deeper, and I think that's what we did.
If I can jump in, and I don't know, because I don't want to, again, I do want to hear from Mrs. Gerber and Mrs. Guernsey, and of course, Mrs. Jacobson. So I throw out there the devil's advocate position of if it doesn't affect, if it doesn't impact attendance, should we be then having school? I give the example, huh? And I'm, dare I say this out loud? There are certain holidays which we take off, which would not impact attendance if we had school, or would have a very minimal impact. Does that mean we shouldn't be having those days off? That's what I mean by when I'm looking for, to frame the discussion. I have been requested to look at the policy, and I said it was lacking for decision-making purposes. So if, if the data, if the attendance, but not establishing thresholds, is the primary consideration, which again, I agree was very compelling, well, what about for things which aren't categorized by that?
Mrs. Guernsey.
I was going to speak to that, because absenteeism is not the singular driving factor for me, and I wouldn't be able to put a threshold on it, although I did do the math, and I was very compelled by the case that, of the increase in absenteeism on the, in the case of Eid. But I was thinking about, I'll say Veterans' Day, and my dad is a veteran, so I'm very respectful of that holiday, and I question whether, as you would say, people would actually take that day off if we did have school on that day. And I also see a benefit to having students in school that day for educational purposes. So for me, like, this is totally case-by-case. I wouldn't want to see a policy that constricts us in any way, because there are so many different categories of holidays, and I like the flexibility that our board has. I mean, we're elected to make these kinds of decisions, and I'm comfortable doing that.
Mrs. Vitale.
Thank you, Mrs. Guernsey. And I was going to use Veterans' Day also, because I think that, you know, that was a holiday that, not this board, but past boards have had discussion about. And, you know, if we had school that day, I'm not sure that we would see how many kids we would see take the day, because of the wonderful celebrations we do have in our school buildings on that day. But in speaking to those who have served, and, you know, what it means to them, and, you know, it was an education process, that they want kids to have the freedom to just either spend it with relatives or friends that have served, attend Veterans' Day ceremonies, or just have the day to be free, what our veterans fought for, that that's a reason to have it. So I do think that listening to our community has to factor into it, and it's hard to quantify that. I think we did it, past boards did it, when they made the decisions to have the Veterans' Day holiday, and this board did it for Eid. So I agree, Ms. Guernsey, that it's really, I did look at the attendance data, I think that is part of the discussion, but not all of it. And as our community changes, you know, our approach to our calendar, you know, potentially can change, so that we should not necessarily just always look to past practice. Well, it's important, but I think we need to be open.
Okay, my turn. Thank you for bringing this up and opening the discussion. I agree with you that it would be somewhat fruitless for the three of us to start guessing about where we should begin with this policy. Number one, I'll just start with the policy itself, and I'm glad it's coming forth, because it's a little bit out of date, and there's some statutory updates that we can make to that policy, that will put it back into compliance with the statute. Outside of that, I'm off the holiday thing for a minute, and more into other issues with the calendar. I feel like every year, it's a bit of a debate, when I think that this is an opportunity for us to maybe eliminate some of the debate start dates, finish dates, things like that. But my list that I, when I went back and looked at it, just at my own self in preparation for this evening, I came up with my list, and I did look at the variance between the town and the district. There is a significant difference in holidays, the town and the district. The number and volume that I feel that we have on early dismissals, how we're utilizing early dismissals, and they seem to be growing exponentially. We have an unwritten practice, not in policy or reg, about graduation days that we are allowed to have graduation or not. So if that's going to be the practice, then let's put it in there. I do personally have strong feelings on start date and finish date, and the in-between, little bit different, because I do feel that, to your point, Mrs. Kelly, going into July would be incredibly problematic for our 12th graders. So I have strong feelings on a finish date, so just putting that out to you on where I will be advocating in the policy committee on that. Other than that, maybe possibly looking at the count that we use for snow days, but again, open to having the holiday conversation as well. I think it would be helpful to cement some of the feelings or values of the board into some sort of, either a reg with Mr. Testani or the policy. So I have an extensive list that's beyond just that one decision. So I have an extensive list that's beyond just that one decision, and I think the things that the board and previous boards have grappled with every time a calendar comes out. And maybe we can come to some consensus around some of those easier topics at least and around that. So that's my hope, anyway, going into it.
Mrs. Gerber.
I'm just going to say some of the same things that other people have said. I just think in general, the calendar is a reflection of our community, and that is one of the reasons why I voted the way I did. The attendance played some role in it, but honestly, I just feel like different districts have different calendars. Our district has some days off that other districts don't, and vice versa. That's what we feel as a board, or this board, or future boards, or past boards have felt, and that is what the community has weighed in on, including Eid and including Veterans Day are just two examples. Those are days that other districts do not have off, and we do. Again, reflection of the community.
Back to you, Mrs. Max and Caneli.
Well, and first of all, I would say, Mrs. Gerber, that was a phrase nobody's used yet. So no, I do appreciate that you weighed in. I think that actually is great language to have in policy. So thank you all very much for this. I do think it's very helpful. I make no promise of the timeline, because as we'll maybe get during a legislative update, I don't know if we're getting that at this meeting or the next. Policy is possibly going to have its hands full, as it usually does for the new school year, but you do have my promise that this is something that we'll get to, hopefully, sooner rather than later. So thank you very much for the discussion. I appreciate it.
Okay, moving on. First reading of school nutrition and meal pricing. Mrs. Laborious.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Jacobson. And it's a pleasure to present to you the financial update on school nutrition program. This is as of May 30. If you look at the 2223 column, it was at your table. We're currently seeing a $974,000 balance, which is really positive, and that's the actual just through 4/30. If you look at the year-over-year from that timeframe, it's lower from last year by $247,000. That would be expected. We've, the last two years, we've been in the fortunate situation where we've had free lunch for all, and we've had a lot of reimbursement from the state, the federal government threw a passage from the state in smart funds and also supply chain monies. So that's why we saw the favorable balance last year and the favorable balance this year. Remember that the school nutrition program is a separate entity from the Board of Education, and so it has its own rules. One of the rules is that you are not allowed to keep more than three months' worth of expense value of a given year in your account. You have to submit a plan to spend that down. So this year, for example, if we were to use the current actuals, it would be 3.2 million divided by 10 months, and so it would be 320,000 times 3. That's what I would recommend we carry forward in the balance, because that gives you a reserve, particularly heading into next year, where there will be some changes when we go back to a paid meal climate, where we haven't been in for many years. And I just remind everyone that we're reimbursed from the federal government based on the number of meals that we serve. We anticipate that that will go down. And so, and we've received a lot of positive feedback this year with some management changes at Whitsuns, with coming out of COVID, having a lot more meal options and fresh meal options and promotions. So we welcome more feedback from the community, but we've heard some really positive and favorable feedback about food this year. And one of our additional proposals is with that, those surplus funds that we had from last year, is to buy some kitchen equipment for Walter Fitzgerald, so that they can have a kitchen at Walter Fitzgerald as well. So this will be updated. We would need to keep about 990, so we'd have a small balance to spend out that is submitted to the state in October, when we close out our books on the school nutrition program. And I'll pause there, because I see a question through the chair.
Ms. Teresa.
Yeah, sorry. You just, you lost me a little bit, and I apologize. 990, I see 974861, but you're saying that it will be what?
Oh, I apologize. Let me take a step back. So for 6/30/2022, we had a $1.3 million balance, but if you took the 3.3 million, which is our expense for the year, divided that by 10, you get about $330,000 a month. Multiply that by 3, that's 990,000. So last year, we had the difference between roughly 990 and the 1.4 million that we were able to submit a spend-out plan to the state. That's 372K. We've submitted that spend-out plan, and that's with the state. That includes the kitchen renovation, the equipment portion for Walter Fitzgerald. This year, we're still finalizing the year. We currently have a balance of 935,000. If we ended today, that would be, what I would suggest, we just, we keep in essentially like a reserve to be able to accommodate anything that might happen next year. You should be keeping at least like three months' worth of expenses. But if, once we go in excess of that, which I expect to do when I add May and then partial June experience, we'll have a little bit of money left over, so we'll be submitting a plan to the state to spend that money out as well.
So anything over 990, you're saying now that you want to spend every dollar of that, but you're going to put it towards, you're anticipating that it's not enough to fully cover, but put it towards the kitchen renovation at Walter Fitzgerald?
So, oh, I should be more clear. We're required by statute to submit a spend-down plan, anything over 990, for example, which is equal to three months of expenses from last year, of which a portion of that is used to purchase equipment. So there's allowable expenses that you can use it on. The Walter Fitzgerald kitchen, we'll talk about in a minute when we get to the budget options, but the fit-out, the rehab of the building itself is not eligible, but the equipment purchase is, and that was submitted to the state.
Okay, so that's already been submitted.
Correct.
We close out the year in two weeks, roughly. When will we anticipate an answer whether we can spend that money on that?
So we have an answer from last year. That's been accepted, and we can revise that if we need to. There's sufficient time. For the upcoming year, we haven't submitted a plan for the new funding, because we don't know what it will be yet until we finalize. We don't close out our books until around August, and that plan is due to the state in October. So I'll report back to the board on that plan as well.
Okay. So you're talking about spending money this summer that was from last year?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can I follow up on that? Yes.
So we submitted a plan for Walter Fitzgerald last year.
We submitted a plan to the state that included equipment purchase for Walter Fitzgerald. Well, no, it wasn't submitted last year, it was submitted this year. Let me just rephrase. In October, we submitted a plan that included free lunch for all kids for the whole year, and that was submitted in October. When we didn't need it any longer, because the state revised in April and announced that it was going back to providing additional funding, we then submitted a revised plan in April that included a request for equipment for Walter Fitzgerald.
Okay.
I just have a follow-up. You're spending the money on the equipment, however, the project piece is separate bucket of money.
Correct.
So you're pre-purchasing the equipment, but you're saying you don't have an approved plan for the project. Is that correct?
So we have an approved plan for the equipment.
Yes, I know that.
Which we can revise if we need to. And we also have a plan that we're going to talk to the board about tonight as part of the spend-out plan, to include the fit-out portion of, for the kitchen.
And that doesn't have to be approved by anybody?
Correct.
Just us, basically?
Correct.
Okay. Because I thought I heard you say, we don't have a plan for that. Never mind.
Yeah, well, I mean, technically, it has to be approved, and that it has to go through a contracting process, but not the concept of it. It does not have to be approved, correct?
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? No. Okay, so this is a first read, and we will come back to this at our June 27 meeting, if anyone, oh, sorry, did you have more?
Oh, and there's just one more piece, the meal prices. So there's a second piece that just lists the current meal prices. I'm not recommending an increase to the meal prices at this time. The board did authorize a price increase last year, which brought us in line with peers in Derby and also Southern Fairfield County. So I would suggest that we keep it at the same. We hadn't increased our prices since 1718 and prior to that, 1415. And given that we do, are in a positive condition right now, I think it would be good to continue at the current prices that we set last year.
Ms. Teresa.
Yeah, just a question on the meal price. The elementary lunch price of 3.10, that is, just to be clear, that has been waived for this year. So the reason that people are getting charged only $3 instead of 3.10 is because if they're only going for the second helping, which they're responsible for paying, correct?
Yes, thank you for clarifying that. That's correct.
Okay, because when I look at my kid's balance, he only gets charged $3, because he likes popcorn chicken and gets two servings, but he's not charged 3.10. I want to make sure I'm getting charged the right amount.
That's correct.
I'm not being undercharged, then?
You're not being undercharged. You won't see a bill in the future, Ms. Teresa.
Just to clarify really quickly, you said that you're expecting to have a decline in the meals next year, because we're going back to paid, but yet you're not including an increase in the price. So just to, looking out to the end of next year and knowing that we want to make sure that we have those three months covered, and we don't get back into a situation where we had been previously in a deficit and had to move several hundred thousand dollars into this account. So you've done the analysis, I assume, based on what you're assuming the reduction in utilization would be, therefore, our reimbursements, and that we will still be in the correct color.
That's correct.
Of this account, yes, correct.
That's correct, yeah. We went back to pre-COVID times, made some adjustments for some assumptions, and it's a conservative estimate that we will be able to cover our needs next, in this upcoming year, based on anticipated trends in the upcoming year.
Yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. First read of options for 2022, 2023 year-end expenditures. Again, Mrs. Laborious.
Okay, so you have what we call the placemat at your table, which is a large list of the facility projects that you had received at two board meetings, was it the last board meeting, at Tomlinson? And this has been updated. So Angeles is going to walk you through that. In addition, I just wanted to update everyone on the Q4 preliminary, just before we get into that. We are not anticipating additional transfers, other than minor, to tick and tie to close out the year. So we're grateful that the board provided the opportunity to have the transfers earlier in the year, so that we could do the more timely spending in the categories. I will have for you at the next board meeting, I just didn't want to hand it out today, because I want to make sure that it's not changing number, because as we finalize the year, things go up and down by small amounts, but I want, I don't want people to be confused. But I do have a summary, as Mrs. Kelly asked for, of round one, round two, and round three transfers, and the total net within each major category. And something that was really helpful that came up at the Board of Finance meeting was a look back going 10 years back to see what had transpired with the transfers throughout the year, seeing that this is part of a trend that's been going on for many years, and is, would, I think, be expected. That some years, you have more attrition in personnel, you might have needs in special education, you might have to defer capital maintenance. And when you look at the trend over 10 years in capital, in maintenance, major facility projects, and also IT capital, you can see that the funds that they've, we've had to give up in some years, because we've frozen accounts, versus years that other accounts were in need and gave up, nets out roughly over time, because we have to close our budget as the Board of Ed with a zero. And so some years, we've had to increase, do transfers to personnel. Some years, we've been able to transfer from personnel to maintenance and facilities. This chart is not about the transfers. This is about spending within maintenance and facilities. So it's a result of a balance that we had in utilities, because of a warm winter and lower-than-projected rates, as well as transportation, lower usage than anticipated. And with that, we'll walk you through this chart.
Good evening, everyone. As you can tell, so the first page is everything you've seen before, really on the second page where it starts, and we highlighted everything that's been added to this worksheet in red, just to clarify, so that if it's in red, it's something that was not presented at the May 11 meeting, but is on there as of tonight. Some of these are number twos from our 1-2-3 list. A lot of these are things that have come in over the year, and as we started to build the next year's 1-2-3 list, they would have been priority ones, so we were able to knock them out and keep the process moving. So we're going to have to actually really redefine, redefine the 1, 2, and 3 list moving into this summer, working with the principals at the buildings, because a lot of the ones that had come in are what you're seeing before you in red tonight. I can walk through them if you like, or we can go to any questions on them, specific projects that you see that you have a question on.
Just got this, so if you can give us a second to look it over, but does anyone have any initial questions? Mrs. Max and Caneli.
I'd clarify exactly what we're being asked to do. Is it that we have a dollar amount needing to spend? I mean...
So we were asked, this is a little bit unique.
We've been looking at this back and forth for quite a time, so now I'm losing track of, what exactly are you asking?
Sure. So we're reporting, I think we were asked to just report out on the spend-out option, it's not even options, it's called options in the board agenda, but it's really just what we're proposing to do for spend-out, and we plan to do. It's more of a heads-up to say, because of utilities and, you know, some balances in utilities and balance in transportation, as we refine and get the final bills for the final months, it's looking like, the bottom line, if you go to page...
Four.
The final page, is it four or five? You'll see that the board transfers that you've authorized to date are a million. Angeles has shown where he's entered all those requisitions, because we had been asked before on updates on those projects. All the contracts are in place and moving. End of year spend-out is internal transfers. That's the funding that is referred to when we talk about the utilities and the bus monies. It doesn't require a board vote, because it's not a transfer amongst major classification. We're just giving you a heads-up, because although we're not using it for utilities as it was budgeted, and we're not using it for transportation, we are spending it out, because we had deferred maintenance projects that are critical that we're doing this year.
Right, but as fair follow-up, and obviously, I'm sure Mr. Tostani would appreciate this feedback, although it doesn't require board approval, it's within a certain category. Obviously, if we saw something that you were planning to spend money on, and we saw another thing as being a greater priority, that's the conversation you're looking to have. Is that correct? To a degree?
I mean, I just did this in response, as a board, as an item of FYI. We welcome feedback, but I think this is the plan that we're planning to do for this year.
Let me try and clarify, Mrs. Max and Caneli, because this is the first year that we've done transfers at multiple times throughout the year. At this point, normally in the year, we would get the multimillion-dollar list and ask for a vote at the subsequent meeting on those transfers. There still is funding, so this is to tell the board of that what they're planning on spending that money on, and if there needs to be a vote on something, because it is between classification, we have that opportunity to do that, as we would normally do at the end of the year.
Right, and, but normally, if the, if, you know, if things have gone the way they wanted, and these things were deemed important, as part of our budget vote, we would have been doing a prioritizing, we would have been questioning some of these items. Now, staff is just saying, and I'm not saying this is a bad thing, that's what they're being paid to do. They are the experts, they're determining the priorities. It's not that I'm questioning that, but that's what's different about this process, is that we have a lot more money at this point in time, due to something that likely won't repeat itself next year. We're looking to thoughtfully spend it on much-needed projects. But again, this is normally a discussion we should have been having in a robust fashion at budget time. These are items that we would have been debating and discussing.
Well, these, our maintenance list was a part of our budget backup and discussion, and certain projects were put in the budget, but we always have that 1, 2, 3 year list.
Right, some of which we weren't spending money on before, and now we can.
You mean for the 20th? Yes.
Correct. So, and then, so to that point, then, at the bottom of page 3, to the end, just remind me again, is that simply to remind us, hey, these are things that, you know, building leaders requested, but we have opted not to pursue those in the interest of the other things, in terms of spending out that money?
That is true. So those are categorized as a priority 3. The twos are on there, and the ones are the ones that we have actually moved forwards with.
I think the...
I think the, excuse me, just to, in response, I think we identified projects that we knew we would have no issues in getting completed as well, rather than identify projects that we know, as we can see with the current scoreboard situation, that would be delayed well beyond the timeframe that we like, so.
Clarification on the priority list on the new document, next to the 644-710. Am I to read that? That's the exact same number that we got on May 23rd, so the priority list still, balance still looms at the same exact number? So is there a red number missing below the 1553026, meaning we have nothing left on the priority list after this?
I think, Angeles, correct me if I'm wrong, you're not doing the things that are left on the priority list? You didn't move them over, is that right?
Yeah, so the priority list number that you see doesn't include the ones that we are not moving forwards with. So the total is only the projects that we are moving forwards with at this time.
I just want to know what the number is under the priority list. So is it zero, or is it still 1553?
1553.
So it'll be the same number?
Yes.
Because I don't have time to calculate it myself right now, but thank you. Okay, anyone else? Mrs. Vitale.
Some of the, some of these playing fields that are being resurfaced, these are town fields, correct?
That is correct. We discussed the Sturgis Field at the...
Holland Hill, too?
Last meeting. Holland Hill is a town field. It's a, and we, I spoke with the superintendent, and we felt that it was time to get it up to where it was prior to the construction project at Holland Hill. There's been a lot of internal conversations between ourselves, Parks and Rec, and the town, about some of the damage that was caused at that field during construction, so we felt it was the time to resolve those issues.
Got it, thank you. A follow-up to that. So it's within our purview then to do what we would like on the town field properties going forward, or now, if we wanted to?
We did work closely with Parks and Rec on this project.
But the answer is yes, we could, we could do that.
I wouldn't say yes without conferring with Parks and Rec.
So as long as they agree with the item that they would like for us to pay for, then we can do that?
I would say yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yeah, I'm, I just, I'm a little concerned on this precedent a little bit, I will say. Not that I might, hey, I'll spend anything on, you know, the fields and the equipment that we need, but I do feel at some point, like, should we eliminate some of this gray? Like, I don't, I'm, can I keep talking? Thanks. Because this whole, it's very confusing to the public. It's confusing about who's paying for what. It's confusing about who has authority over what. It's confusing about who gets to close what fields or not. Is there, I don't know, but maybe this is not for tonight or this item, but I would maybe push it to Mr. Testani, or to Facilities Committee, or someone like, I, I just feel like if we're going to start putting operating budget and numbers into these fields, then maybe we should have more say over them then, and what happens to them.
Can I respond to that?
Yeah.
So our intentions, working with Parks and Rec, is to go back out to bid this fall for our playing fields. Part of that conversation has been, at this point already started with, let's get better clarification as to who controls what, who pays for what, and who does what with the fields. For instance, we currently pay for repairs to the sprinkler system at Roger Ledlow Middle School Field. However, that is a town field, which is getting turfed in the fall. So there's been a lot of unclarification, so we are working to clarify that.
We gotta get that cleared up. Mr. Asa, go ahead, I know you're itching.
Yeah, no, I, I wanted to agree with you and, and think that this is something that we could eventually discuss in facilities, but I, I do want to say that I thank Mrs. Vitale for the question and Mr. Papa George for the answer regarding Holland Hill. I will say that this has come up many times in, in things, and I think we need to just, in future projects, when we're doing a 20-plus million-dollar project on a school, that we should be making sure that we're thinking about things like this. So I'm not faulting the Building Committee, it's done and over with, but it would have been nice if we could have addressed this at that point before we closed out that project.
Absolutely.
Mr. Peterson.
I was on that Building Committee, I was liaison to the Building Committee. That field was an issue at the time. What has changed? Because there was, before we closed out that project, unless I'm grievously mistaken, there was a discussion between Parks and Rec and the Building Committee and our contractors to try to correct deficiencies with the field.
That is correct. And I know there was some work done right at the end of the construction project to try to alleviate some of those problems, but the, the true feeling from the town officials that I speak with in Parks and Rec is that it was never restored to its full glory that it was. It was one of the premier soccer fields in town, and it just has not been the same since the project took place there. So that's why we thought this was the time to make it back to where it was.
We're all kind of giggling there for a second. Mrs. Kelly.
Hi. I guess, I don't have the, the other, the next year's budget in front of me, but I, I guess I'm, I'm going on the assumption that everything that's in red or everything that's on here that we're spending out, we did not include in next year's budget, which is the right answer, I believe. However, I would, I'm, what I'm trying to reconcile in my head is if these were such priorities and that we're doing them now, why were they not in? Like, I feel like there should be overlap between this and that, or is it that because we put other things on, like, these were just then the spillovers from the next one? You know what I'm trying to say? So I feel like if these were such a priority that we couldn't get to them, well, we can get to them now because we have extra money, in my mind, these are things that should have been in next year's budget.
Mr. Asa.
Just to piggyback on that, I mean, you'd be talking about another point on the budget. So, I mean, I, I think it, it comes, I would think that it ultimately comes down to the administration presenting the board with a budget that would have been, you know, potentially millions more.
May I say, with all due respect, so because you have those fluctuations in, in the past insurance cost, when we didn't have, when we were self-insured, and now personnel costs, when we are trading out staff more than we'd like to in terms of retirements, for example, and, and different things that happen in the budget every year, I commend the board for adopting the policy today that includes a look at a multi-year process, because that's why we do have the one, twos, and threes list, is because we, we should be maintaining that even on a biannual basis, you know, which is what we attempted to do here, because we've been doing it on an annual basis, but, but really, that, that gets reprioritized and shifted as new needs arise. But you, you would always want to have that multi-year plan that the board's vetted and has seen and is familiar with, so that when you do have, you know, your budget next year, you're looking at your priority ones and your next-level priorities, and some other new ones might have come, number ones may have come up, you're planning for those if you do have year-end funds. It's just prudent to do that in a multi-year way, and I do think, you know, I commend Angeles for, for doing that with these projects. And I do think it would be hard for us to come to the board for a vote at year-end and accomplish all of this without having had the conversation on the ones and twos and threes priorities and have some of this list that you've seen before, you know, and are familiar with this process.
And some of these are, are minor things that were, I get it, we have some leftover money, let's repair, let's repair some of the stools in the cafeteria, like, that's, but like, when we get to things like $400,000 for a kitchen at Walter Fitzgerald, that to me seems like something that should have been vetted out in next year's budget process. Like, that to me is a bigger, we have some found money, let's build a kitchen. You know, like, I, I'm just having a hard time with the little things like this, even resurfacing a playground, okay, that's a lot of money, and it's a nice thing to do since we have extra money. But like, building a kitchen, it's kind of a big deal. And I'm just wondering why that wasn't in next year's budget.
Testani, go ahead.
So that came to light just by chance one day on my visit to Walter Fitzgerald, after the budget process had almost played out, that they were not receiving, or they were receiving lunches that were brought from off, off the premises in a warmer. And they were being limited to what their options for food was. But there was a kitchen there that was previously used, I guess, by the Giant Steps, that we could possibly convert over and have a site there where the food was prepped and served, just like at the other schools. So had it not, had it come to light much sooner in the, you know, and I was present in September and October, it would have been included in the budget, but this was the perfect opportunity to make sure that those students will have access to the same food as, as the other students at the high schools.
For the record, I'm not opposed to them having a kitchen, I just was using that as an example, sorry.
Mrs. Vitale.
I agree with Ms. Kelly on this, and especially for this project, that is a big size, that I would have liked just the board, a little more discussion as for us planning for it. I totally support it, and I'm appreciative of moving it forward, but I think that just moving forward, if something big like that is on your radar, even if it's outside of the budget process, just bring it to the board earlier for us to discuss, and, you know, we might want to have different ideas about what it looks like, or make it bigger. That's it. You know, we toured, we toured, I'm happy that we had the opportunity to be at Walter Fitzgerald, to see the kitchen and ask questions like, could we make it in a different location? Could we have a serving line? Could we have, you know, a different, whatever, I forget, you know, larger refrigerator? And that might have been questions that other board members would have had if we had gotten a presentation on it earlier in the year.
I'm going to ask a question. The weight room renovation from the 23rd, it was listed as $46,000, but that's gone up on this sheet to 226, is that correct?
That is correct. So the $46,000 we originally anticipated was to use the, utilize the capital project of renovating the bathrooms at Ledlow High School for part of that money to do the renovation and everything, which would have been included as part of that project that we had already been approved for. Where we've put the full amount in there to do that renovation at that bathroom now, I guess everyone will know very shortly. We've, we've received two bids for those bathroom projects, and based on the two bids, one was way over budget, and the other one was disqualified for the inaccurate information. And actually, following up on the way over budget one, we were, we ended up disqualifying them as well. So this will have to go back out to bid, which is going to delay that project. So that's why we, we felt that doing that particular bathroom, we could actually do this summer and get it completed. So that's why we were asking for the full money for that project here, as opposed to linking it in with the bathroom project, which is going to be delayed.
We're going to bring this back on the 27th, just so board members really have time to look at this and compare to what we got before, and just answer any additional questions on any of this for the 27th. And it was put on for our first read. So I appreciate providing the update on this and any changes, and of course, if anyone has questions, you can probably submit them, but we'll talk about it. Oh, Mrs. Vitale, yes.
Do we, no, I apologize if we had gotten this. Do we get like a write-up on some of these larger projects? Like, I'm going back to the kitchen renovation.
Like a 14-point?
Yep.
We could do that for you. The 14 points was usually traditionally used for the Board of Finance, but if you'd be comfortable, we could do that.
Well, I just, I mean, we get it for a size, especially given the large amount for that. I mean, I'm just looking at what we approved for our capital and capital non-recurring, you know, a $400,000 tennis courts, and we had a write-up and an idea of, you know, a more detailed breakdown of the project summary sheet when we voted.
Just a quick question. Is that normally though for bonding projects, right?
It is, but I think it's still just in terms of, you know, large expenditures that we're approving, that we have an idea of what that money is being spent on and what the budget is for the project. I'm not sure if it's necessarily relevant, if it's bonding or not. I think it's just good, just good for us to know that when we approve a project for a certain amount of money, we have an idea that the money that we allocate will be enough to get the project done. And I think that having this level of detail is just helpful for us and for the public, and to have it on the record of what the money, what exactly is being done with this for $100,000.
Do you have a threshold, or you're just asking for this one specific project? I'm just curious, thinking about staff time on this with everything else coming up on the 27th. I understand what you're asking, but I don't necessarily think I want to sit through a 14-point presentation on 10 or 15 different things.
I mean, bonding...
Especially when we have no vote on it.
Well, that's true.
We, we literally are not voting on it.
That's true, we are not voting on it.
So I think it's kind, I, I totally understand what you're saying, but I'm also cognizant of the time to put into something that we have no vote on.
That's true.
I mean, some, the, the question that I know the Board of Finance has always, is how confident are you on the current estimate of this cost, and do you have enough in contingency? Should it go over? So I mean, those might be items that it would be helpful to know if, you know, the confidence level of the estimates that you have right now on this, is there contingency for, for that? So I think that would be prudent for us to understand on some of these like multi-hundred-thousand-dollar projects, just to be prudent in case some, how they double next year or something. I think that would be fair. Mrs. Gerber.
Yeah, and I'm just going to speak briefly to this, because, you know, I, I could absolutely agree that the Walter Fitzgerald kitchen needs to happen, but, I mean, $400,000 is not nothing, and a kitchen renovation or creation is, is not nothing. I guess one question I have is, are we sure that this will actually be completed this summer?
It will not be completed this summer. It will be started this summer, where we would hope to get September, October as a completion date, moving into the school year.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it said completed summer. Has that been changed? Or did I misread it?
I...
Okay, so September. But, so we think September is valid, or is that kind of? I guess my question is, you know, is that going to be problematic with the kids back in school, you know?
No, so we, we have done projects where we create a barrier between the construction area and the kids being back in school. This will really rely on lead time for equipment, which we're pushing through to get that ordered as quickly as possible.
And, and I don't know who, I don't know, this might be through the chair to Mr. Testani, is having this kitchen, is this changing staffing at Walter Fitzgerald, or is that just going to be staff that's on-site is going to be working?
Whitsons would have to provide a staff member, that was part of the, the RFP.
Yeah, yeah.
Or whomever receives the winning, the contract.
So we, we did announce recently that Whitsons was awarded the contract, and we're really happy to have them as partners. We were going to talk to you about that on, at the next board meeting, and they hope to come in and do a presentation to the board in the first September meeting. But yes, they did, they do have in their plans to have a staff member there. Right now, we do have a driver that's driving and taking orders and really hands-on there, and so that person, as well as, we have chefs that rotate throughout the district. The chef is dedicating a little bit more time to that site, as well as having one person dedicated full-time within the bid of the RFP, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Max and Cannelly.
Just one question, and I'll admit it's a project I'm especially interested in, but I, I agree that we're not voting on it, we shouldn't ask staff to do the extensive memo or anything like that, but I would be very interested in floor, if it's easy to do, and I leave that up through the chair to Mr. Testani, but of a floor plan before and after, and photos before and after of that bathroom weight room renovation at Ledlow High School. I'm just, I'm really delighted at that project, and I think that'd be something that'd be nice for the, to memorialize and to be able to show to the public and other town bodies.
Agreed.
And my last question, and then we will move on. There's a lot of requisition, you know, entered in these columns, and pretty dependent on timing, so, I mean, this is a lot to process, like, through the town in terms of our timing, so just...
I can tell you, this is a point in time, and since this was put together, Courtney and I did meet with the town purchasing department, and I will have to go through and update this, but I believe almost every one of these that says rec-enter can now be changed to PO as...
Purchase order, yeah. Purchase order, yeah, created. Yeah, and, and they have a commitment, they're, they're, they have a commitment, they've seen this list, they know our year-end list, we've spoken to them extensively, not just about this, but all of the changes that happen at year-end, and they're on board and have been processing things timely and have been... list, they know our year-end list, we've spoken to them extensively, not just about this, but all of the changes that happen at year-end, and they're on board and have been processing things timely and have been helpful, so, yeah.
Great. Okay, thank you for that update. Approval of FEMA grant funding and expenditure, recommended motion that the Board of Education approve federal emergency management agency reimbursement grant funds in the amount of $355,370 to be used for school security purposes. Can I get a motion, please, Mrs. Max and Cannelly, seconded by Mr. Asa, discussion. Mrs. Max and Cannelly.
Just wondering, big picture, if we have any breakdown of how the money will be expended, again, not on a site, no interest in the site mentions, just on the.
So we do have initial, I've asked it to be broken down a little further, we have it by site, and I would like it broken down a little bit more granular to indoor/outdoor kind of stuff, so, should have that in another few days. But it is a more comprehensive list, so from there, we're going to have to sit down, we have a meeting scheduled next Thursday with our IT folks, to kind of go through everything and prioritize, because the list obviously does exceed the $355,000.
Clear for the board, we are only approving this, so anything in addition would be, come through a budgetary process or something else, like, this is a one-time approval for these funds, go ahead.
Correct, but it's also approving it as a large number, as opposed to any itemization or any, it's essentially, we're approving the money blind.
Yes, there is no current breakdown of the $355,000, such as server, number of cameras, whatever it may be, et cetera, at this, at this point in time. They're still working on that assessment and breakdown. We could vote on it on the 27th, but if people would be more comfortable, if Mr. Testani thinks that he will have a further breakdown, but I'm not, you know, we kind of do, we've had multiple conversations about what we know and expected the equipment to be, technology-related, infrastructure, refresh cycle, cameras and whatnot, but I understand, we don't normally have, we have some sort of a backup.
Yeah, we're just waiting after the meeting with IT, just to get some, I would guess, I would just like to say, on common ground as to whose responsibility certain things would be, in terms of equipment that would be necessary to support any, any new installs.
Anyone else? No? Oh, Mrs. Vitale.
Do you, through you to Mr. Testani, do you think that you would have, by postponing this until the 27th, you would have that information? I'm just thinking, as we have this other money that we're spending on other projects, say, after you get more information, it's $100,000 more, could you reallocate some of this other money towards that? I mean, if you so choose, that would be a conversation for you and Mr. Papa George, obviously, but.
Yeah, I think if, if it was to complete a certain aspect of the project, and it would take a little bit more funding, we would like to possibly discuss shifting some of the money from something here to check off something on the other list.
Mrs. Kelly.
I hear you, but do we even have time to do that? Like, aren't we, don't we have to get the recs in? Like, I feel like, while I would love to true up whatever the number is for what you need and take it from somewhere else, I don't think logistically we have time to do that.
Mr. Asa.
Yeah, I think we should go ahead and approve this 355 tonight, or procedurally, and then if Superintendent and Mr. Papa George come up with a situation like was just mentioned, then we can discuss that further in executive session, being security, but I think we should move forward with this vote tonight, specific to the FEMA funding, because we know it's going towards security.
Again, anything additional would have, be subject to a different vote unless it came from within existing pot, so, all right. To the public, any public comment on this item? No, all right, back to the board, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. All right, approval of minutes, recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the following meeting minutes, May 23, 2023 regular meeting minutes, and the May 24, 2023 special meeting minutes. Can I get a motion, please, Mr. Asa, seconded by Mr. Peterson, any, Peterson, sorry, any discussion? Any discussion? Public comment? I mean, sorry. Back to the board, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Superintendent's report.
Yes, I'm just going to update the board on one item, and before I do that, just a quick, I know there's folks out watching and listening, congratulations to all our 2023 graduates. We had a challenging day last night at the two high schools, but overall, it was just great to see students happy and celebratory. I know this was a class that also went through a lot of the challenges of the pandemic and came out on the better side of this, so, congratulations to all the eighth graders that are moving up to high school, and we look forward to welcoming them, welcoming them in our high schools in the fall, and all the fifth graders moving on to middle school. And one update would be on our math, I don't want to call it academy, our math acceleration at the elementary school. We have identified and notified the parents of the students that did qualify at each school. Qualifying at each school was a little bit different, based on the scoring of the assessments that were provided by the district. So we have created a core group, a cohort at every school of our elementary schools, and we have also spoken to the MST's who will be providing the service at the building. This was in consultation with our new Executive Director of Bath, so we're looking forward to having those students receive the acceleration, but also the opportunity, if they do start to struggle, they will have the opportunity to go back into the classroom and receive the instruction from the primary teacher.
Okay, thank you. Committee reports, Mr. Asa.
Yes, so the AC Building Committee had its first meeting on June 9, when I attended. They elected their officers, Jason Lee is the chair. The Building Committee is also going to be handling the Ward-Fitzhouse AC project, in addition to Phase 1 schools, because there's a state grant, so a building committee is needed, so that was considered part of their charge. They're getting, doing a construction manager for the three AC projects, and a general contractor for the Ward project. It was discussed that there's a hard date for the HVAC programs and the grant, that they must be closed out by December of 2024, but there was a provision for extenuating circumstances in the language, and the district has put in a request, an appeal, to have that date extended to October 31 of '25, for which they're waiting to hear back. And I think the assumption's going to be that there's going to be many people in this situation, especially with trying to get these projects closed out in a, in a certain amount of time, especially with lead time on the supply chain. They did choose colliers for the owner's rep, and they happened to score very highly on experience, but they also came in as the low bidder, so it was a bonus.
Anyone else? Mr. Peterson.
Yeah, speaking for Finance Committee, we met last week, we discussed the BOF Quarterly Meeting, which was the same day we were at Tomlinson, Courtney acquitted herself admirably, and we were talking about trends, too, about, as she mentioned, looking back at the surpluses returned and expenditures, we spent some time talking about that. We also got a presentation on the Watchwire Utility Tracking Program, which was very impressive from my standpoint, the degree to which we can really drill down and get very, very granular data. I hope that would be helpful in future budget plannings. We talked about the lunch program, we also talked about, asked about facilities rental trends, with seeing whether reservations had been dropping off based on the January 1 or July 1 raise in, you know, the standardization, let's call it, of rates. So far, it seems like we have not seen any general trend away from reservations, which is, which is good. And just to give you a heads up on something we talked about as a future item, but kind of went into a little preliminary discussion about under-enrolled high school classes, that's a thing that we've had on our agenda as a future item for a while, but it turns out that Superintendent has already begun some discussions on kind of optimization, and we may get a report from him at the end of the summer.
Mrs. Gerber.
Sorry, I just have a question about what optimization means in that regard.
Well, we've just started having conversations last week with the high school teams in looking at courses that are severely under-enrolled over time, so they start with a entry-level course as a freshman with 12 students, and then they're left with four by the time they reach their senior year. There's some courses that, in essence, are being combined, so students are really in, taking the same course two years in a row and getting credits for them, and there is some differentiation within the curriculum, but just something that needs to be investigated a little further.
So this is something that would impact the courses available to students for next year, then, or you're thinking ahead to the following year? I'm just trying to understand the timeline.
No, that would have to be discussed prior to the course selection in January.
Thank you.
And just to be specific, I was wanting to discuss it at this, starting at this time, because of the budget implications and manual studies.
Yeah, I might ask that we bring this to a broader conversation as well, just because I think that there's a whole lot of things that could be wrapped up in this, such as graduation requirements and certain provisions, so this is something I think that I would like to continue discussing.
No, absolutely, and again, we did not have a discussion, it was, it was a, we expressed an interest in having a discussion, and then it branched off and just, there's already been some overlap with what the administration is doing.
Perfect, thank you so much. Anyone else? Board comment? Mr. Peterson.
I just want to, I want to echo what Mr. Testani said about graduation, I was just, it's the best thing that we do. It's, I enjoy it so much, it was, rain or shine, it was, it was a great evening, I had a fantastic time. Thank you for the, for the district for really putting together a very meaningful celebration for our students who are very well-deserving of graduation.
Mrs. Vitale.
Just happy last day of school for everybody, and, you know, thank you to our teachers, our staff, really, everyone who makes such a positive impact to our kids each and every day. Wish you all, thank you for your work, and wish you a happy and fun restorative summer, even though we'll be seeing some of you next, in two weeks, and probably two weeks after that. I would echo the same, just wishing everyone a wonderful summer and rest, so, yeah, I agree, it was a good year, thank you. Anyone else?
Oh, Mrs. Max and Cannelly.
I did want to say, just one word of welcome to our new FEA president, or president, I don't know if you're still president-elect, if it counts as president, and I did, I think it's worth saying, a congratulations to Mr. Smoller on his retirement. He's done an awful lot of work representing our staff, you know, sometimes the board may have been in disagreement with his work, sometimes, you know, we were great to partner with him, but there's no question that I think the district was better off for his years of service to us, and always appreciated his voice, so I just wanted to add that.
Okay, public comment.
Hello, Mick McGarry, President-elect of the FEA until July 1, but Bob's on his way to Japan, so, a brief note, I'll speak to that very briefly, but I believe the board should know that 23 minutes before his retirement party, Bob was tutoring a student. That's, that's the dedication he brought to the role. So, with much love and a lot of respect, we say goodbye to Mr. Smoller, and I will do my best to fill very, very, very large shoes. I also wanted to take a moment to thank the board and the superintendent, the staff. It was a memorable graduation, one that will go down in the record books, but it is, without you folks showing up in the rain, and the staff putting together these things, and, and the faculty that helps organize these celebrations, we can't have these very, very special moments. You know, Ward's graduation was really touching, when Ethan went across, it was a standing ovation, it was just a great moment in time, no matter what the weather conditions, and it can't happen without you. So we do appreciate your support, and so thanks from the teachers, to the board, and to the superintendent, to the staff. Thank you all very much for what you do for us, and let's have a great summer.
Anyone else, public comment? All right, recommended motion that this regular Board of Education adjourn, Mr. Peterson, Mr. Asa, all in favor? Motion passes, you may ask. Thank you, everyone, have a great night.